Mayor Sanchez.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Keim.
Here.
Councilmember Jensen.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Weiss.
Here.
Please stand for the invocation. This evening, we have Reverend Jason Coker, the lead pastor of the Oceanside Sanctuary.
Thank you, council members. Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. It's an honor to bring the invocation tonight. If you will all join me in a word of prayer, please. Great God above, hear our prayer today. As this city council embarks on what will surely be another challenging year, we ask you to grant each of them and all of us in this city grace for these five things. For the challenges of a global pandemic, for lost jobs, for crumbling businesses, but most of all, for nearly half a million lives lost across this nation, God grant us healing. For Black, Brown, Asian, Pacific Islander, and Indigenous Americans whose property has been stolen, whose needs have been ignored and whose voices have been silenced, God grant us repentance. For criminalizing our neighbors on the street, for treating homelessness as a public safety problem rather than as a humanitarian crisis, God grant us compassion. For the disenfranchised voters of District One who were denied their right to elect a trusted representative who lives in their neighborhood, God grant us mercy. For the year ahead, when difficult decisions must be made in the interests of the common good in Oceanside, God grant us wisdom. Great God above, hear our prayer today. Amen.
Please remain standing and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, tonight, we're going to begin with a proclamation. And this is in honor of National Black African American History Month in the city of Oceanside. And tonight, we have President Satia Austin of the North Sandiego County NAACP. Good evening, Satia. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Mayor Sanchez.
It is with great pride that I present this proclamation to you regarding this very important month of February. And I'd like to go ahead and read this. Whereas the city of Oceanside takes great pride in recognizing February 2021 as National Black African American History Month, celebrating the many notable contributions that people of African descent have made to our country and to our city. And whereas Black African Americans share a history of great struggle and sacrifice by men and women who came to these shores as slaves in chains, considered as chattel, and by their descendants, whose rights as a people in our country continue to be systematically denied. And whereas Negro History Week was first established in 1926 by the Association for the Study of African American Life and History, ASALH, under the leadership of Dr. Carter G. Woodson, famed African American historian known as the father of Black history. And whereas in 1976, ASALH expanded the celebration of Black History Week to a month-long celebration of Black history, followed 10 years later by Congress in 1986 with Public Law 99-244, designating the month of February as an annual public and private celebration of National Black History Month. And whereas this year's 2021 national theme for the observance is the Black family, representation, identity, and diversity. And whereas the city of Oceanside is committed to equity, inclusion, and the cultural and racial affirmation of our youth, parents, staff, and community members who identify as Black African Americans. And whereas the city of Oceanside's goals must include closing the equity and outcome gaps for Black African Americans through policies and practices that reflect the experiences of our Black African American community, ensure greater access and opportunity, and honor their history, heritage, and contributions. And whereas the vision of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is to ensure a society in which all individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on race. And whereas the North Sandiego County National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, NAACP, created in Oceanside in 1965 by Charle Seta Allen, has worked judiciously and tirelessly for the achievement of equity, equality, and social and racial justice in Oceanside and in the region through its many programs and efforts and by pursuing relationships with elected officials, insisting on inclusion and fairness in processes and outcomes. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Esther Sanchez, do hereby proclaim the month of February 2021 as National Black African American History Month in the city of Oceanside and call upon our residents of Oceanside to observe this month with appropriate programs, activities, and reflections, and to continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, equitable, and prosperous for all. Signed this third day of February 2021 in Oceanside, California. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez, and members of the city council. On behalf of North Sandiego County NAACP, its executive committee, and its members, we proudly accept this acknowledgement.
Thank you, thank you. And I hope that everyone here in Oceanside, one of the most diverse cities that we have, continue to celebrate the diversity of all of us here in Oceanside, made possible by the fact that we have Camp Pendleton next door that has traditionally brought families here from all over the world, people from all over the world, and that we continue to work towards that equality. Thank you, Satia.
Yes, ma'am.
We next have a presentation by North County Transit District. Can we get that started, Mr. Barrow?
Yes, we can. Mr. Louf Barrow, are you there? Can you hear me?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready, sir.
All right, thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, city council members. Appreciate the opportunity for the chance to speak with you this evening for a couple of minutes about North County Transit District and its rail improvement and safety program, specifically focused on our new Charger locomotives, which support our coaster commuter rail. So I'll go ahead and switch to the presentation. So as far as background for everybody, North County Transit District currently operates a fleet of seven locomotives on the San Diego subdivision, again, to support our coaster operations. Two of them, we bought new in 2001, so coming up on 20 years old. And then five of our F-40 locomotives were refurbished in 1993, so they're coming up on 30 years old. So in June, our Board of Directors approved the purchase of five new Siemens locomotives. They're called Chargers, SC-44s, to replace the five F-40s that we do have. The agreement with Siemens had a couple of options with it, including the purchase of four additional locomotives. Two would replace our other two locomotives, the F-59s, and two, which supported an expanded coaster service based on the Sandag Regional Plan. In March, the board authorized the purchase of those two locomotives for the Sandag Plan. And then in September, the board authorized the full notice to proceed for the purchase, the final two, to replace the F-59s, which gives us grand total of nine new locomotives. Here's a depiction of the funding source for those nine locomotives. You can see it's a little over $70 million. Relies on grants as well as funds from states, from state funds from various sources, including SB1, and then a grant from the Carl Moyer Program. So again, we've ordered nine in total. The highlight of these is it converts the fleet to a more efficient, lower emission Tier IV engine, so that's great for the environment. They're also quieter locomotives, and it supports the increased frequency of coaster service according to the Sandag Regional Plan. NCTD has received the first five of those locomotives, and the final four are due to NCTD by the June of 2023. So as I mentioned earlier, these new locomotives are significantly quieter than our old fleet. As a rule of thumb, as far as sound with decibels, if there's a change in 10 decibels, the apparent sound loudness to the human ear will actually double. So if you look at our old locomotives, those F-40s at idle, they're listed at 68 decibels, where the new Chargers are at 58. So our new locomotives will appear to be half as quiet as our old fleet. And that's important for residents to know that they are going to be quieter and make sure that they follow all the appropriate signage as far as crossing. Certainly cross only at designated crossings because, especially at night, it may be hard to judge when those trains are coming because they are going to be significantly quieter. So based on any new equipment, we're required by the Federal Railroad Administration to follow a commissioning plan. I'm not going to go through all of these in detail. I'll highlight some of them. But it is a regulatory requirement that we actually have a plan to accept them. We will conditionally accept all these locomotives. Certainly, the ones we have on site, we've already done. We'll make sure we have the appropriate training for the crew, which includes the locomotive engineer and conductor, as well as all the maintenance technicians that work on those locomotives. We'll also do some testing on site. We want to make sure that it integrates with our positive train control and all the grade crossings so that there's no issues with those. And then finally, we'll do some simulated revenue service to make sure that the trains operate as intended. And then we'll do the final acceptance and sign off. And then Revenue Service for these new locomotives, which we're excited about, starts next Monday on February 8. So for the positive train control testing, we started that last November. And we want to make sure that those locomotives are integrated not only with the equipment on the wayside, so that would be the signaling system, for example, and the track, and that all that is communicated to our Operations Control Center. And again, the positive train control technology is there in the case the operator is unable to stop the train. The train essentially will stop itself. So it's a safety enhancement, again, that's designed to make sure that we're operating in the safest mode possible. We tested it uphill, downhill, with the braking, emergency stopping, and everything was successful with those tests. We did complete it all based on the regulatory requirements. And again, the positive train control system ensures that we continue to operate a safe railroad in the future. We also tested all of our grade crossings, so that requires the trains to go back and forth. If there's multiple tracks, they have to do it on both tracks. They have to do it in both directions. We want to make sure that as the locomotives approach the crossings, that the crossings recognize the equipment that's coming and make sure that the gates are lowered down with all the appropriate bells and whistles and make sure everything works as intended. And again, that ensures the integrity of the locomotives and makes sure that all of our equipment's working safely for these new locomotives. Additionally, we've been simulating Revenue Service. So based on COVID-19, coaster service has been reduced. We're currently running Monday through Friday with no weekend trains, and we reduced approximately 50%. So where we reduce those trains, we inserted our new trains for testing, which is what we've been doing for simulated Revenue Service. That started in December and has continued through January. And again, the goal is to make sure that everything's working as intended on the trains, and it allows for final acceptance of the locomotives prior to starting Revenue Service with customers. And again, we have a checklist, as you see detailed on the bottom right, which goes through all the requirements that we have to do to make sure that these trains are safe before they go into service. So as I alluded to earlier, Revenue Service for these new trains will start next Monday, February 8. And again, we're still going to operate on our current schedule, which is a reduced schedule based on COVID-19, and it'll continue to be in effect until we start to see ridership growth. As far as what we've done to let folks know, we've done a social media campaign to make sure that people are aware of our new Chargers and overhauled Coach cars. So we've also done a midlife overhaul that started on our Coach Car fleet. We currently have four that have been completed. We're almost done with the fifth. And they're going to do four a year, all the way through 2026, and that'll overhaul the entire fleet. That's a top-to-bottom overhaul, new paint job, new interior, make sure all the mechanical features work. So it's great to have, and it's great for the customers as well as NCTD. We've updated our website with additional images of the new Chargers. Certainly, this presentation. So again, thank you for the opportunity to talk to your city leadership, to let you know these new Charger locomotives. And then we're holding a press conference once we start Revenue Service. That is a virtual press conference, where we'll have folks make announcements and proclamations and sort of celebrate the new Chargers that we have for our coaster fleet. So a more efficient, better-for-the-environment, new equipment, certainly much more reliable than the older fleet. And we're excited to make sure that we can have this service for our customers in North County, including citizens of Oceanside, where we can take them where they need to go, and supporting our mission statement again to deliver safe, reliable, user-friendly public transportation services for our customers in North County. So thank you again for the time. Certainly happy to answer any questions, if there are any, at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Louf Barrow. Exciting, exciting information and news. And you said this starts when? Tomorrow? But we have a conference.
February 8. That's when the Revenue Service starts. So it's Monday, February 8.
Fantastic. Any questions? See none? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
We have on our agenda today a swearing-in of our newly appointed council member Cory Jensen. But before we do that, I'd like to take up the issue of the consent calendar items, items 5 through 13, with item number 8 having an updated memorandum with updated language, which has been filed and is now part of the record. Is that correct, Mr. Navarro?
That is correct.
Thank you. And we have no public comments or requests to poll from the public. Is that correct?
None from the public.
Thank you. Any requests to poll from the council? Councilmember Weiss?
Poll 13 and move approval of the balance.
Okay, so item number 13 is polled, and we'll be discussing that later after... See, that would be the Treasurer's Recommendation for Appointment to the Citizens Investment Oversight Committee. Okay, let's vote on the balance.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We're going to go back to our swearing-in under the Proclamations and Presentations of newly appointed council member Cory Jensen. I understand we have several speakers.
Was item number 13 polled?
Number 13 was polled, and we're going to take that up later.
Okay.
Yeah. So we are back up to the Proclamations and Presentations. I understand we have several requests to speak. I believe the last count was 40. Is that correct?
We have 40 members of the public wishing to speak under the swearing-in.
Okay. So in light of the number, we're going to request that you speak. Members of the public, please speak for two minutes rather than three. So if you could start with the public comments.
So under the swearing-in, we have 40 speakers. The first speaker is Rob Lee, to be followed by Pat Frazier, to be followed by Christina Sharp. And we are getting Mr. Lee on the line. Mr. Lee, if you're there, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, I'm calling to support newly appointed councilwoman Cory Jensen. She's been a longtime resident of Oceanside. Her passion, her professionalism, and her bright energy will be an amazing asset to this council. I've heard a lot of negativity, which has been very disheartening, as I don't believe that's the spirit of Oceanside that I grew up in, that I live in, that I love. She represents what the spirit of Oceanside is, not negativity, not trying to bring someone down, not spending our energy doing negative things. It's about building the community together, you know, building positive things. The negativity has been heartbreaking to see. And it's just, it's great to see her up there, and I support her 100%.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Pat Frazier, to be followed by Christina Sharp. Pat, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready.
Mayor Sanchez, Councilmembers Keim, Weiss, Rodriguez, and newly appointed Councilmember Jensen. My name is Pat Frazier. I live at 3196 Tupaul Drive, and I am a resident of District One. I have been a permanent resident of Oceanside since 1971, and I have no personal issues with Ms. Jensen. I want to thank you for the opportunity to express my concerns. District One deserves to have a council representative who, first of all, meets the residential requirement. According to the article published in both the San Diego Tribune and The Reader, Ms. Jensen fails to meet the residential requirement to serve as an Oceanside City Council member. Secondly, District One deserves to have council representation that understands the unique makeup of District One. We need a representative who will respect, preserve, and meet the needs of our very versatile neighborhoods. We need a representative who has at least some experience in the inner workings of our city government. As a citizen of Oceanside, I'm deeply concerned about our council's direction. We appeal to you in December not to appoint, but to allow us to elect our own district representative, and you voted 3 to 1 against. Then, out of the 35 applicants for the vacant seat, you chose Ms. Jensen. The majority council ignored our voices and, again, voted 3 to 1 to approve. And then you swiftly swore 3 to 1 to approve. Will you listen to the voices of District One voters this time? If Ms. Jensen does not meet the residential requirement, since you took the responsibility for selecting our own candidate away from the voters of District One, it is now your responsibility to make sure that she meets the residential requirement. We are aware that Councilmember Jensen just registered to vote at the address listed on her application in July 2020. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
The question is, does she live there? Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Christina Sharp, to be followed by Jane Marshall, to be followed by Brad Fussell. And we're getting Mrs. Sharp on the line. Mrs. Sharp, are you there?
I am here.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Ms. Jensen is not eligible to represent District One as she does not live in District One. This is clear. Her house at 815 North Pacific was listed available on Airbnb as of yesterday. I could have reserved it for this Sunday. The availability calendar showed the unit was available for periods of time and booked for others, indicating it is an active rental and not a primary residence. One of the reviews from a renter was dated January 2021. She has since removed the listing, which is wise, as it is a clear indicator that she is registered to vote at an address where she does not live. I do not believe in special elections. They are unnecessarily expensive in most cases, especially when the community has vast resources in terms of people who are civically engaged, who represent our city's ethnic and socioeconomic diversity. I want to give the council the benefit of the doubt here. I was on the call and watched the workshop with each of the interviews. You had many candidates who are both qualified and eligible. Some were downright excellent. In particular, I was struck by both Julia Miller and Tao Ha. They were impressive, young, innovative, each demonstrating their understanding of the need to balance economic development and smart growth with the importance of serving communities who have been here when it wasn't so cool to claim "Oside", where residency in the greener pastures of Carlsbad was conveyed and, for some, must still convey a certain level of status. You have failed even to have a conversation about other applicants and have, it seems, made a selection based solely on the fact that her resume indicates the word "realtor." You did not do your due diligence. I'm new to this, but if this is indicative of the way you people decide to spend my money, I'm honestly concerned, especially since some of you ran for council on your business acumen. Perhaps you need to refresh your course in due diligence or maybe just Google it. She must resign. You must now call a special election or go back to the candidate pool and have an actual substantive discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Jane Marshall, to be followed by Brad Fussell, to be followed by Jessica Singer. Ms. Marshall, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. Dear council, oh, but a tangled web we weave when first we practice to deceive. That's been around for decades, ages. Newly appointed council member Cory Jensen has signed her name to the city application that has trapped her in a web of deceit that has tarnished the council and our city. She must resign to be forthwith further damage is done. For the city requirements, she must live in the district represented. However, a quick look, anybody can do it, shows that her address with the city's short-term rental registration is a non-hosted vacation rental verified by the neighbors. When I emailed and asked her about this, she stated, "I have leased an apartment two blocks away from my house in District One for 23 years." Well, then, why didn't she use that address instead of the 815 address? Tax documents show that she lives in Carlsbad. Where exactly does Ms. Jensen live? The city appointee application states at the end, "If electronically filed, I affirm that the information," meaning the applicant, "has entered..." It's true, what they have entered is true, and the mark is considered my legal signature. Ms. Jensen signed this when she doesn't even live there, thereby falsifying her application, and that is grounds for her resignation. And apparently, the DA thinks so too. Dear council, please correct this mockery for the citizens of Oceanside, not just in District One, but all of Oceanside, who trusted you to appoint someone honorable to represent us from the beginning, has falsified her application. Ms. Jensen must resign and stop the blackening of our city and the increasingly tangled web of deceit now being investigated by the district attorney. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Brad Fussell. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your last name, to be followed by...
No, sir, that is...
All right, perfect. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Fussell.
Yes, sir. I'm here in support of Cory Jensen. I've known her for many years and her family. I had come across her when I first moved to Oceanside, stationed at Camp Pendleton. And her and her family were very supportive of military families there in the area. I have got to enjoy her family. I know of other organizations she's supported in the area and afar. So she's just not just in Oceanside alone. She has always supported other organizations outside the community there also. I myself have come and gone from Oceanside, and I have really enjoyed it there. So I find myself always coming back to Oceanside and loving Southern California. I am a resident of 1437 French Court. I've been there off and on many years. And one thing that's very important for me for everyone to know about Ms. Jensen is that she wants to be there. She is really looking forward to doing a good job for the community, to prove herself. And she has, just wanting to be there alone, I was really surprised that she wanted to move forward and do something such as this. So that made me feel really good. So I think the council has made a good choice by someone wanting to be there and do the job that's expected of her and be forthwith and a good person. And like I said, I've known her family off and on for many years, and I know she's a big supporter for the military families that are retired and the ones that are also there too. So, and I have been to that home in question, So, and I have been to that home in question, and she has been there off and on and had get-togethers at that property. So I think that you all made a good choice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Jessica Singer, to be followed by George Baird, to be followed by Brent Lovett. Ms. Singer, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, whenever you're ready.
I just wanted to say that I am a huge supporter of Cory Jensen. I've known her for a very long time. She is a wonderful, wonderful person. She's a wonderful mom, a wonderful friend, and so passionate about her community, and I'm really excited for her new venture, and you guys made a great choice with her.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from George Baird, to be followed by Brent Lovett, to be followed by Timothy Brooke. Mr. Baird, whenever you're ready. Please unmute yourself.
Sir, you are muted. You need to unmute yourself.
Sir, we can't hear you.
Mr. Baird, we cannot hear you.
Okay, we'll circle back to you. Next public comment is from Brent Lovett. Mr. Lovett?
Hello, this is Mr. Lovett. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Brent Lovett. I am here to support Cory Jensen. I have known Ms. Jensen for well over 15 years and very shocked that she's actually put her toe into politics, but I have never met a person in my life as more passionate and has more energy and goes out of her way more to help people than Cory Jensen. She, you know, had a drug abuse thing happen close to her, so she jumps in and goes out and helps people with drug abuse. She had a person commit suicide that touched her so deeply, she jumped in and she runs out and helps people on suicide hotlines. She is such an amazing soul, and I'm very shocked, honestly, that the city council would pick somebody who's non-political as Cory Jensen is to come and actually improve the council and improve the city of Oceanside. I commend you guys amazingly for your choice of Cory Jensen. I know that she will bring such passion to that city. She works hard without ever asking anybody to acknowledge her. So again, I'm very shocked that she's actually gone into this realm, but I cannot imagine a better person for the city of Oceanside than Cory Jensen. I have personally stayed at her home many, many, many times in Oceanside with Cory Jensen, so I know she's had a presence there for at least 15 years. But more importantly, the heart and the soul of Cory Jensen is unmovable and will do amazing things for the city of Oceanside. Thank you guys again for what you have done and your faith you put in Cory. I believe in her, and I think you've done very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Baird, we're going to go back to you. Can you hear us? And Ken, you're still unmuted. I don't think your microphone is working, sir. I apologize. We can't hear you on our end. Sorry, sir. So move on to the next public comment from Timothy Brooke, but we understand that he is not in the room right now. So we'll move on to our next public comment from Tommy Thompson. Mr. Thompson, are you in the room?
I am here.
Okay, whenever you're ready, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. I'm so grateful to be here. I'm a longtime resident of District One, and I'm here to support Cory Jensen. What a wonderful choice. I want to commend the council for making that choice, for picking a woman as a father of four daughters and a beautiful wife. I just really am grateful that the council chose Cory Jensen, and I appreciate the fact that, also, that Cory is a granddaughter of Mexican immigrants. Her deep roots in Oceanside qualify her so well to serve me here in District One. And I echo the other comments from the other speakers about their support for Cory, how kind and wonderful she is. I, you know, I just feel so embarrassed and sad for the people who have been so nasty and vile to Cory. We are better than that, Oceanside. I, you know, I even, you know, I commend the three council members for appointing her, but I understand Mayor Sanchez's vote, as she explained it in the newspaper, she doesn't know Cory. But I gotta tell you, the more I get to know Cory, the more I like her. And, you know, this really comes down to truth. This really comes down to somebody saying where they live, and that's where they live. And if she's telling the truth, then she's true. And I want to just quote our Savior, Jesus Christ, who said, "You shall know the truth, and the truth shall make you free." Unfortunately, I don't know if the mobs will let Councilmember Jensen free from this, but I do think that Cory is speaking the truth, that she lives where she says she lives, and I do believe her to be a good and honest person, and I support the wonderful decision by the city council to appoint Cory Jensen to District One, my district, and I'm very grateful that we'll have her for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Amy Krajec, to be followed by Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Davenport. Mrs. Krajec, are you there?
Yep.
All right, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. And I'd like to call for the resignation of Cory Jensen. She lied and falsified information on her application, which automatically would disqualify her to sit on city council. If we allow someone who doesn't live in Oceanside or even the district they're trying to represent, we're setting a precedent that would allow anyone who owns property, even a developer, but lives somewhere else, to have a say in our city government. It violates our own city policy on the basic or general qualification to run for city council. We need to do background checks, including searching social media to find some of the stuff that they say about their constituents and for those who are running on city council. We either need to enact a policy that allows the clerk investigatory powers, or we need to form another position or committee to do this, since it obviously hasn't been done. Cory should not be allowed to provide clarification or try to get out of her fraudulent behavior of her lying on her application. Obviously, this behavior is just a sneak peek at what I'm sure her further behavior will be. If you lie on your application, you shouldn't be allowed to sit on the council. We don't want frauds on our city council. If you swear her in this evening, it's a very sad day in Oceanside. I'm tired of the majority of the city council who doesn't listen to the majority of their own constituents. I think we need, we should have an election for District One. They weren't asked what they wanted. They weren't asked who they thought might even be able to represent them. The majority, the three males on city council, chose a Realtor because the three of them received money from developers, and I don't appreciate it, especially considering you're still trying to develop back here in South Morrow Hills. And we really need to investigate this further and make sure that we don't have frauds on city council. So that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Cindy Davenport, to be followed by Roger Davenport, to be followed by Patricia Torona. Mrs. Davenport, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, City Clerk, and City Attorney. I am Cindy Davenport. I am in District One on Crouch Street, Historic Loma Alta, for going on 13 years. I'm shocked that the city of Oceanside has not properly vetted applicants for the appointment to the District One council member seat. Applicants should be vetted for proven residency in the city of Oceanside and district as applicable. They should also be vetted for financial fitness and any other issues which could lead to a conflict of interest in acting for the city of Oceanside. Ethics and transparency should be priorities for those who say they wish to serve the people of Oceanside. We all care about Oceanside, and we can do better. In view of recent stories written by at least two respected reporters, Cory Jensen is not clearly a resident of District One as required for this appointment. In any case, she did not offer full disclosure about either her residence or her name. Clearly, she is not a good fit for our city council, ethically or in substance regarding transparency and experience in public service. Ms. Jensen should resign immediately. This is what the majority of residents in District One are telling you and what anyone looking at facts are telling you. Ms. Jensen may be a wonderful person in other efforts, but competency, transparency, and honesty are fundamental to serving on the city council. Correctly and honestly filling out an application should be the most basic requirement to be met. Hear my voice and the voices of the majority in District One. Ms. Jensen must resign immediately. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Roger Davenport, to be followed by Patricia Torona, to be followed by Sheri Mackin. Mr. Davenport, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Mayor, council, I want to add that Cindy and I are both District One residents, that we've been here for many years. And, you know, I was shocked by this decision, although not surprised. I don't know how it happened that someone who has no visible qualifications, experience, or education for this job was chosen over people who had extensive experience, extensive education, and extensive qualifications. People like Kyle Crayle that our mayor proposed for this position. I really don't know what to say about this. You know, if she's so passionate for the city, why have none of us who've been working around the city ever heard of her? Why hasn't she been involved in any volunteer things within the city during this time? I guess, you know, it's just a continuation. A year ago, our mayor was accusing us of forgery and fraud, and of course, that was false, and it was proved false, but not before we had to hire attorneys and defend ourselves about that. So you guys need to clean up your act. This is not the way to do things. I recommend that you have the mayor, our person who was elected to our district, Esther Sanchez, choose her successor. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next public comment is from Patricia Torona. We're not sure if you are in the room or not. Patricia Torona? No? All right, we'll move on to our next public comment from Sheri Mackin, to be followed by Holly Lake, to be followed by Jody Williams. Ms. Mackin, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Sheri Mackin, Honorable Mayor and Council. Let me open with thanking the honorable, and I say honorable, Mayor Sanchez for having the foresight not to cast her vote for Jensen to represent District One. After all, if it looks like a duck, swims like a duck, and quacks like a duck, then it's probably a duck. If she hasn't served our community, states she lives at an address registered with the city as a non-hosted vacation rental and takes a $7,000 homeowner's tax exemption on property in Carlsbad, it's fraud. And if you don't agree, it certainly shows she has poor judgment at best, but I guess it's not really her fault, right? How about the voting block, Vice Chime and the Realtor House Flipper guy, that voted together to bypass council policy to only vote for their five top candidates, even when Mayor Sanchez pleaded with them to follow city policy and interview all the applicants? This is where the blame lies, and with them and their shortsightedness, the urge to get their choice in that seat throwing due diligence and common sense to the wind. They have some explaining to do to the residents of District One for appointing this woman as their representative. The only right for this wrong is for Jensen to resign and the seat for District One to go to a special election where the voters of D1 can properly vet candidates and make their decision on who they feel would best represent them. So I ask Ms. Jensen, please do the right thing for the community and yourself. Resign. Don't wait for the plea bargain from a felony conviction to a misdemeanor like Frigazio did for the same actions in Escondido. Resign now. Instead of paying attorney's fees, wouldn't it be wise to use that money to catch up on your outstanding tax debt? Again, thank you for your leadership, Mayor Sanchez. As you showed with your vote, character counts. And speaking of character, we can always count on you to be the voice of reason on this council. Thank you for that. I appreciate your keen sense of right and wrong, credibility, continued advocacy for the democratic process, and concern for all-
Thank you, Ms. Mackin. Your time's up.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Holly Lake, to be followed by Jody Williams, to be followed by Ken McAllough. Holly, whenever you're ready.
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready.
Oh, thank you. I just wanted to call in and voice my support for our newest councilwoman, Cory Jensen. I have personally seen the incredible work that she's done as a counselor, and I know she is someone who is a go-getter, she's a problem solver, and she just wants the best for others. And, you know, putting work aside, as a coworker, personally, I have experienced some very wonderful things with Cory. She has helped me and my family personally when I really needed it, I'm down on my luck. And so Cory is the type of person who will just jump in when she is needed, and she doesn't even think about it. She knows that when she's being called to action, she's called to action, and she will step up to the plate. And I think that you guys have chosen a wonderful person who is going to be an excellent asset to this council. And I think a lot of us, besides the people that are calling in with negative comments, I think that we are all really definitely looking forward to the wonderful things that she's going to help do for the city of Oceanside. And thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go back to Patricia Torona. We unmuted the wrong person. We apologize for that. Ms. Torona, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? We cannot hear you. Can you unmute yourself?
Ms. Torona, can you please unmute yourself so that we can hear you?
I'm trying. Can you hear me?
Now we can. Whenever you're ready.
Okay, yeah, because I was writing you, saying, "Why did you not let me unmute?" Okay. Well, I don't think you can see me. Can you see me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready.
Right. Okay. Honorable Mayor and City Council, my name is Pat Toron, and I live in District One. And I concur with some of the previous speakers, including the Davports, Pat Frager, and Jane Marshall. I ask that Cory Jensen resign and allow us to choose our representative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We understand that Tim Brooke is in the room, so we'll head back to you, sir, whenever you're ready. Can you unmute yourself?
Yes. All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready, sir.
All right, good. Thank you. So I'm actually not here to talk about Cory Jensen at all. I find it ironic that she was a real estate agent. So I'll go ahead and start, and I'll keep it short and simple. Go ahead and cut me off when the time's up. Homeless people have been treated like outcasts, and now they are being systematically excluded from society. For example, if you smell bad, you'll be asked to leave an establishment. Nine out of 10 establishments will not do business with a homeless person who has money and has shoes on and is properly clothed because of their appearance, because of their smell. And these are things that they can do very little about.
Mr. Brooke, I'm sorry to stop you. Did you want to sign up to speak on items not on the agenda?
No, I've got about, I only have about a minute and a half left, so I don't see why there's any reason why I can't continue.
I just wanted to ask you if you wanted to speak on items not on the agenda, because you said you didn't want to speak on this item. Because we could have you speak later on on items not on the agenda for three minutes.
No, that's okay. I'll just go ahead and finish up real quick.
Okay, thank you.
So there's always been enough homes. There's 16.4 million vacant homes in America, and there's only 3.5 million homeless people here in our country. That's not the point. The point is that these people don't have a chance at life. Not one of you started with nothing. You had support, you had money, you had a foundation, your birth certificate, your ID. Some people have none of that. They're not dying because they can't be helped. They're dying because you won't help them. Last week, it rained, and it absolutely crippled hundreds of the most vulnerable people in our society. The way that you've gone about handling homelessness is just, in some cases, revolting. At most, it's inappropriate, at the least, okay? It's wrong. I've been to 40 states, and I've starved. I've been beaten, left in a pile of my own blood because they thought homeless people are disgusting and they should be killed. I've seen my friends hurt. I've had friends that die. When a homeless person dies, it takes weeks to find the body because they have to hide, hide from persecution and from the ill intent of the hateful, and you are fundamentally persecuted-
Thank you so much, Mr. Brooke. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a point of order, Mr. Brooke did register to speak on this item with the clerk's office. Our next public comment is going to be from Jody Williams, to be followed by Ken McAllough, to be followed by Arlene Hammerschmidt. Ms. Williams, are you there? Ms. Williams?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Whenever you're ready.
Lovely. Good evening, Mayor Sanchez and councilpeople. Nobody is questioning Cory Jensen's ability to bake chocolate chip cookies or be a lovely person. Our issue is that she lied on her application, she does not actually live in Oceanside, and there is enough evidence that the San Diego County District Attorney has opened a case in this matter, and I'm asking Ms. Jensen to do the right thing and resign. The San Diego County District Attorney is listening and has opened a case. Council majority, are you listening yet? Please don't make wild excuses and backpedal. It's so discouraging, council majority, that a person with four years in back property taxes that are unpaid, that are somewhere in the vicinity of $50,000, can be appointed to a council to be-
to a council to be fiscally responsible for our city. You goofed up big time. Take responsibility for your actions. Again, you know better. And if you don't straighten up, the citizens of Oceanside deserve better. Catching you in yet another flagrant attempt to deceive is exactly why we deserve an election to let Oceanside vote. Please don't bring up the cost. You had the opportunity to save all the money you spent on forcing Measure L to the ballot, and you chose not to easily reverse your vote on the zoning change. Think of all the time the kids could enjoy the pools with that money, Mr. Keim. You cannot have it both ways. We, the people of Oceanside, and the residents of District One in particular, deserve to vote. To have Cory Jensen resign immediately is the proper thing to do. How do we know that her salary isn't, you know, something she pays her taxes with, that she doesn't answer to developers with monetary incentives? How would we know?
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Our next public, we don't have Ken McAllough in the room, so we'll move on to Arlene Hammerschmidt. Mrs. Hammerschmidt, whenever you're ready.
Hi. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez and councilmembers. Arlene Hammerschmidt here. Excuse me, ruralish Fire Mountain. First of all, everything that Pat Frazier said, I second. Thank you, Pat. Please resign, Councilmember Jensen. And I'm calling for your resignation. There's serious question regarding her actual primary residence, which is what she attested to on the application. From the evidence I've seen, degrees and certifications cited on councilmembers' application are expired, but attested to as true and current. Please resign. Residency stated as 20 years, but recently she was quoted as she's lived here all her life. Personally, I know different than that. If I lived in District One, I'd stand in line right now to sign a recall petition. Please resign. If the man, Ms. Jensen, called Uncle Donald Andrews, were here and alive today, I know he'd counsel you to resign. I don't see this getting better. I don't see how this can get better for anyone involved. So other than, please resign, Ms. Cory Jensen. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Leslie Davis, to be followed by Bruce Bannigan, to be followed by Catherine Carbone. Ms. Davis, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready.
Okay. Leslie Davies, I live in District One. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers, I don't really care what Ms. Jensen was looking forward to. Maybe she should look forward to paying her property taxes. But is our city run by a bunch of clowns? Your interest in appeasing the developers has clearly clouded your judgment. There were some extraordinarily qualified people among the 36 who applied for the District One seat. One even had a Harvard degree. But you three boys managed to pick the least qualified of all. With all you now know, I can't believe that this city is still planning a swearing-in ceremony for such a questionable character. All three of you, Weiss, Keim, and Rodriguez, have a credibility problem. I am very suspect as to why you would choose the least qualified person for District One. Either you have really, really poor judgment, or you are really, really derelict in your duties. Or possibly you have some other motive, maybe a financial motive. I don't really know. But I'm very, very disappointed. Please do the right thing. Don't allow this to happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
We can't seem to find Bruce Bannigan in the room, so we're going to move on to our next public comment from Kathy Carbone, to be followed by Denise Barrigan, to be followed by Ellen Bartlett. Mrs. Carbone, are you there?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, City Clerk, City Manager, and Attorney Mullen, my name's Catherine Carbone. I'm the founder of Save Our Farmland Friends of Southmore Hills, FPPC number 1423238, and co-owner, co-admin of the Facebook community group Oceanside Votes. I'm speaking tonight to call for the immediate resignation of Cory Jensen for voter fraud and perjury because she does not qualify to serve. We've heard tonight several friends of Cory state what a nice, positive person that she is. She's non-political, she has a diverse family background, she has high energy, and she's a good mom. Please understand that these opinions and attributes are completely irrelevant. Ms. Jensen lied and perjured herself on her city council application. This is a form of voter fraud. If she is found guilty, it's a possible felony. This is very, very serious. Cory can apparently be as nice as can be, have pious, God-fearing friends and relatives who have spoken here tonight, who care for her deeply and respect her, but unfortunately, that doesn't erase her actions. Earlier today, I spent some time gathering evidence from the Oceanside Votes Facebook group and providing it to the district attorney's office regarding this alleged fraud that Ms. Jensen has engaged in. And I will continue to work with the DA, including testify under oath if need be. Ms. Jensen lied on her application for city council in regards to her primary residence as well as her professional qualifications. Ms. Jensen actually lives in Carlsbad, not Oceanside, and we have proof of this. She or someone representing her deleted posts from Oceanside Votes last night, which were damaging to her cover story. However, we already had screenshots, and we have several group members who read what was previously posted. She or someone representing her has also completely deleted her Airbnb listing for her vacation rental at 815 Pacific Street. As an active listing would prove, she does not live there herself, as she claimed to you on her council appointment. In my opinion, she's tampering with evidence by doing these things, and that's why I contacted the DA.
Thank you, Ms. Carbone. Our next public comment is going to be from Denise Barrigan, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your first name. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Denise, and I am a longtime resident of Oceanside, and I currently reside in District One. I attended the workshop, and let me just say that there were many outstanding candidates, a lot of familiar names, like Dr. Tao, who taught me sociology at Miracoast College almost a decade ago, or Kyle Crayhan, that I have attended committees with, who has a good rapport with the community. I was extremely disappointed with the process. Ms. Jensen might be a nice lady, sure, but this is not about her. This is about the residents of District One. The fact that her character and integrity are being questioned so early on is deeply troubling, and the fact that three councilmembers did not do their due diligence is frightening. We are sick and tired of politics as usual, and we demand a public servant who represents us. Shame on you, councilmembers. You have proven you cannot be trusted, and thank you, Mayor Sanchez, for being the voice of reason and for continuously doing the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is going to be from Ellen Bartlett.
Thank you. I believe she'll be the last one, and then we'll have to continue this, because we do have a 6 o'clock time certain public hearing.
Okay.
My apologies to everyone that is holding on. I do feel that the public hearing item will not take too long. So, Ms. Bartlett, go ahead, and then we'll be taking a break from this and going to the public hearing item. Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, there we go. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
My name is Ellen Bartlett. I'm a longtime Oceanside resident, and I want to speak specifically to Cory Jensen, Deputy Mayor Keim, and councilmembers Weiss and Rodriguez. Cory Jensen needs to resign. She should not be appointed, and she should not be sworn in tonight. There are too many unanswered questions swirling around regarding her residency in the district, and they need to be investigated. And the council needs to be respectful of constituents and take a step back from this hasty appointment. There are many fine candidates, and to start out appointing a candidate where there's so many questions that are unanswered is just wrong. It's not too late for you to do the right thing. So please, do the right thing. And Cory Jensen needs to resign, and she should not be sworn in. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bartlett. All right, it is 6 o'clock right now. It is time for the public hearing item, which is item number 15. That calls for, is requesting approval of an operation plan for the El Corazon Aquatic Center, adoption of a resolution establishing a fee schedule for the El Corazon, actually it's El Corazon Aquatic Center and event facility, approval to appropriate $429,800 from the general fund assigned infrastructure account to the Neighborhood Services fiscal year 2020 to 2021 budget for the hiring and training of personnel for the operation of the El Corazon Aquatic Center and event facility. And finally, authorization for staff to budget $1,664,970 in ongoing expenses and $895,000 as ongoing revenue to the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 operating budget. I'd like to open this public hearing and request disclosures of councilmembers, starting to my left with Councilmember Weiss.
Staff, and we received several emails in regards to the aquatic center recently on this item.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez has stepped away. When he returns, we'll ask him for his disclosures. My disclosures, I have received emails, I have had phone calls, I have received a presentation by staff.
Staff.
Staff constituents' emails.
Thank you. Has Councilmember Rodriguez indicated a conflict at all? No?
He's right there.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, would you like to do disclosures, please? This is, we are in item number 15, the public hearing item on the El Corazon Aquatic Center.
Just staff and public.
Thank you. Okay, we, Mr. Navarro, do we have any correspondence on our petitions?
All correspondence has been forwarded to the council prior to this meeting.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go ahead and begin with the presentation by Ms. Crooks, interim Neighborhood Services Director. Ms. Crooks?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Megan Crooks with the Neighborhood Services Department. This evening, I'm happy to bring staff's recommendation to you. There's four items of action here. One is the approval of the operation plan for El Corazon Aquatic Center, the adoption of a resolution establishing a fee schedule for the El Corazon Aquatic Center and event facility, and appropriation of $429,800 from the general fund assigned infrastructure account to the Neighborhood Services Department fiscal year 2020-21 budget for the hiring and training of personnel for the operation of the El Corazon Aquatic Center and event facility. And finally, authorized staff to budget $1,664,970 in ongoing expenses and $895,000 as ongoing revenue to the fiscal year 2021-22 operating budget. A little bit of background, and this is a summarized background as we have been working on this project as a city for many years. April 2015 was the authorization to plan and design the facility by the City Council. In fall 2016, staff obtained planning approval on the project. And in April 2019, the documents were brought forward to the City Council, and authorization to call for construction bids was made. In October 2019, the appropriation of bond proceeds and the award of the construction contract took place with City Council. On October 30th, 2019, there was a groundbreaking for the construction. And today, you can see where we're at with the construction project. It's nearing completion, and therefore, we're bringing forward the operational plan and a budget appropriation so that we may commence the hiring and training of staff. On the operational plan, it plans for year-round programming. The year-round programming will be able to expand all programs. Because of the warmer pools, we'll be able to do more during the winter months. As well, with the size of the facility, there's an overall expansion of programs. So not only do we have more programs, but we can schedule them simultaneously and allow for multiple programmings at one time at the pool. So there's more access by the public and by local aquatic groups. Our priority uses after the general public and city programming will be, the first priority group is our resident nonprofit and school district uses. And then after that would be non-resident nonprofit and school districts. And the final priority group would be commercial enterprise groups. We do have rentals for this facility, and there is a fee schedule I'll present to you. Those, again, as I said, we are able to maximize rental uses and have multiple groups at one time. The school district use, as I said, that's still a priority use, but we are proposing fees for that use, as it will be outside of our joint use agreement. And we're looking for all groups, including our local groups, to pay a fair share for the sustainability of the operation of the pool. Aquatic event scheduling, staff are working with regional groups, as well as will be working with our local club to promote tournament events and things throughout the year. Those would likely occur on the weekends. And the simultaneous programming of Brooks and Marshall Street pools will allow the flexibility. So we have to do some schedule adjusting in order to honor some tournament events for our youth to participate in. We can do that. Those events will also be larger revenue generators for us. Room for growth. So we have not scheduled every single lane in the pool. We still have public access, and we still have some areas that we can bring in new opportunities, whether they are recreational programming or whether they are rentals. We also have room for growth with the event facility. Right now, we don't have it booked because of COVID-19, so we still have that room for growth, not only as opportunities at the facility, but also for revenue generation. The operational plan with the staffing, right now, we're planning to have an aquatics program manager. We'd like to have that as part of this structure. It's not included in the current proposed budget this evening. However, as we move forward with budgets in the future and our structuring of Parks and Recreation, we would like to see a manager position that would oversee three aquatic areas. One would be the El Corazon Aquatic Center, which would have a supervisor. The Brooks and Marshall Street pools and surf camps and outdoor aquatics currently have one supervisor as well, and they would oversee that. The program manager would also be key in working with the event facility and arranging some more of the regional events that can come into Oceanside, and the expansion of our aquatics programs overall, now that we have the space to do so. At the El Corazon Aquatic Center, the staffing, there's two proposed full-time equivalent staffing positions right now. That's a supervisor and a technician. They'll handle more of the operational side and supervisory training of staff, and the technical side of maintaining the pool and the pump house. We also have the majority of our staffing as part-time with the lead lifeguards. There's eight proposed, there's 32 lifeguards proposed, and nine rec leaders. The event center will, we have a proposal for a part-time professional assistant that will help handle the marketing and scheduling of events and rental users there. And use of the nine rec leaders that are also part of the aquatic center would also be utilized for staffing the event center. The fees, the fees that we have proposed are different from the structure that we currently have at Brooks and Marshall Street Pool. But we do have similar offerings, but we also have expanded offerings for the public to select from. We have admission fees, we have passes, we also have our class fees and our learn-to-swim fees. They have slight increased rates. Even though they're packaged differently, it still brings just a slight increase in the rate for the passes offered and the admission fees. What we're changing is the pool rental by lane. Currently, Brooks and Marshall Street are rented by a whole pool or a half pool. Our facility is now large enough that we can rent out lanes, and that's how we get the multiple user groups in there. And that lane rental allows for it to remain affordable for our local groups. The program class fees have a slight increase as well, but what we see with the revenue generation is that we have to look at the volume that we'll be able to produce. generation is that we have to look at the volume that we'll be able to produce with the new facility, and that then helps with the overall revenue increases. We also have the opportunity for new programming. That includes party packages, birthday parties, events, camp offerings. We don't include that on our fee schedule. We handle those on a case-by-case and do it by cost recovery. And those are, the fees are shown in our seasonal catalogs. In addition to the camp offerings, we have safety courses that now will expand. As with most of our programming, either we'll have more classes or we'll be able to accommodate more individuals in a class. So the safety courses will also expand with this new facility. The event facility fees, you can see here, they're hourly rates, and we have broken up the facility by types of areas that we would presume a group or an individual would want to rent out. And these are hourly rates. They can purchase an AV package. The facility will have the ability to have a screen come down from the ceiling, and we have full AV to be able to produce presentations and different types of need for the screen package. The staffing costs will also still be additional for any additional staffing, depending on what they want to do with their event, and catering as well. Currently, the city has a property use agreement with Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative, and they have an exclusive catering agreement with us for this facility, unless somebody wants to opt-out with an opt-out fee. So currently, staff are working with OKC to come up with some type of package that will allow both OKC and the city facility to make the reservations and be able to be successful as a package. So those are being worked out right now. With the operational plan, the first piece of the budget is preparing for opening. We, as a city, will likely be taking over the facility, having it transferred to us for operation and maintenance as of March 26, which means that we'll need to take over the utilities, we'll need to be able to handle the chemicals in the pool. So we have some maintenance and operations that I've included in this budget. And the Personnel Services, those are the positions. We budget them so that we can open the recruitments and start the hiring. When we start paying out the salaries, we may actually see a result in savings from the cost that's presented here. But this is the cost to open the positions. With the maintenance and operations, I did do a prorated version of the full budget of the items that we need for the springtime. So we're asking for this 429,800 as an appropriation this evening. Overall budget for ongoing, the budget is planned out very conservatively. We've planned for the maximum expense costs, which we've included the event facility in this as well. And we also have the minimum revenues that we see coming in. So we, as I said, we still have room for growth in closing that delta, especially with the event facility revenues. The Personnel Services, as proposed, are just over $1 million. The maintenance and operations are at $477,000. Internal services that we paid for IT support, and we're paying into a building maintenance fund, $122,000. The building maintenance fund will build up, and that will cover roofing, flooring, paint, some of the main deferred maintenance items that we'll have for the building structure itself. The revenue, I've lumped them in larger categories here for the presentation, but lane rentals, we're estimating at $410,000 annually. Programs, $385,000, and memberships, $100,000, for a total revenue of $895,000. That would be at about a 53.8% cost recovery, as shown here, and a 46% subsidy by the General Fund. Again, I don't have revenue identified here from building rentals. With that, staff is recommending that the City Council approve the operation plan for the El Corazon Aquatic Center and adopt a resolution establishing the fee schedule for El Corazon Aquatic Center and Event Facility, appropriate $429,800 from the General Fund Assigned Infrastructure Account to the Neighborhood Services Fiscal Year 2021 Budget for the hiring and training of personnel and the operation of the El Corazon Aquatic Center and Event Facility, and authorize staff to budget 1,664,970 in ongoing expense and $895,000 as ongoing revenue in the fiscal year 21-22 operating budget. And I'm here for any questions you may have. Also with me are Mr. Mark Olson, our Division Manager and our aquatics facility expert here, and Amanda Roswell, our aquatics supervisor, who were key in putting this operational plan together. I'm here presenting it, but they've been doing all the legwork behind the scenes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crooks. Do we have any public comment on this item?
Yes, we do. We have two public comment.
Excuse me, let me close this portion of the public hearing and then ask for the public comments.
We have two members of the public that wish to speak on this item. Our first public comment is from Sherri Mackin. Ms. Mackin, whenever you're ready.
Oh, I'm unmuted. Thank you, Sherri Mackin, Oceanside resident, swimmer, pool lover, and very happy to see this on the agenda tonight. I wholeheartedly support staff's recommendation, very thoughtful budgeting, room for growth, just an overall good plan. I did kind of want to highlight a couple things, if I may. Being a swimmer, I can tell you that we did have our challenges with Marshall Street and Brook Street when they were both open as when COVID first struck. And we have so many residents from Vista that use Oceanside's pools due to closing the wave. And they have no pools in Vista, so they're coming to Oceanside. So having said that, looking at lane rentals, you know, I really do want staff to keep in mind that they do crowd residents out, those of us that live here and want to use our facilities. We don't want to go out of town to swim. We want to use Oceanside's pools. And the only kind of concern I had was sharing with regional users as far as making sure that this is not contracted out to a private country, a private company. I'd really like to see it stay in the city's hands for real strict monitoring to make sure that our residents are getting their due for their long, long overdue pool at El Corazon. Again, wholeheartedly support staff's recommendation. I thank you so much, staff, for all your work on it, and I would urge that you would approve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
Our next public comment is from Midori Simovich. And whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I agree with the previous speaker mostly. Thank you very much for making this happen, long-awaited aquatic center for Oceanside citizens. Mayor Sanchez and the council members, my name is Midori Simovich, and I represent Friends of El Corazon. So I'm not actually speaking. I cannot speak my personal opinion yet. We are thrilled to see the long-awaited aquatic center moving forward for the community. Today, we would like to comment on the following points. Friends of El Corazon has raised a concern long ago about the need for additional parking to support large events at the swim center. We would like to see it addressed as part of a comprehensive plan. As you have mentioned, such large events will create revenues to aid the operational and maintenance costs. And environmental impact report for El Corazon required the transportation demand management plan to minimize the traffic failures that would result from building out El Corazon. We request for the transportation management plan, parking, and the traffic plan. We request to clarify if any arrangements have been made with the school districts, because El Camino High School and Oceanside High School Aquatics Program students and their teachers and the parents were some of the main drivers of the aquatic center for the past decades. We believe that those children must be looking forward to finally be able to use the new facility. So I hope that you will not price them out. That's what, that's actually my, that's my personal request. We asked about the solar panels at the last council meeting. Solar panels could help offset the operating costs, and we hope this is being seriously considered. Finally, we request that the city will involve citizens and community leaders for the discussion and overseeing of the management and operation of the aquatic center, just as it has done for the design phase of the aquatic center. And thank you very much. You have done very good service to the citizens to make this happen, and we hope that this will be successful endeavor. Thank you.
Thank you, Midori. And that is the end of the public comments.
That concludes the public comment.
Back to the City Council here. I just want to say that to staff and to the public, you can't see me, but I'm smiling ear to ear. Okay. Ear to ear, this is a great, great project that we have been just so excited about here at the council. And moving faster and faster to August 21st, which is the grand opening, right? The grand, grand, grand opening. So I want to start this off by moving to approve the operation plan, adopt the resolution, and approve the appropriation. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I definitely do not second that. This should not be an item of celebration. This should be an item of depression.
Well, we'll have to make you feel better about this, okay?
Well, I'm going to start out by reading a council policy that came out a year before I was born in this city, believe it or not, in August of 1983. Council Policy 200-01, it is a policy of the City Council that prior to the city submitting applications for grants or beginning detailed work on major new programs, the city manager shall determine the availability of funds. Each new program or grant must have adequate sources of revenue for operation or matching prior to council approval. This, along with just the lack of planning and the future preparation of this project, I voted no on October 9th, 2019. I was the dissenting vote. I was the only one that voted no. I believe that we lacked the information necessary to determine the true impacts financially to our city. And that is relevant and shown in the staff reports today. I do appreciate staff. We've had some changing of color, so out of respect for Deanna, she was not the city manager during the time I voted no. I think Deanna has taken lead in many ways to offset expenses, and I'm very, very pleased with her management of all departments, and I appreciate city staff doing your best and not really painting a rosy picture. What you painted here today is that we don't have the resources to pay for this aquatic center, and we're having to take money from our general fund, which we're looking at barely having enough of moving into the next couple of years to cover a pool. Well, Oceanside, we haven't been the best at being in the pool business. We barely can afford to maintain and operate the two pools we have. They're not staying open. We don't have the staff for them. One of them is falling into the ground and requires major infrastructure improvements in order to stay safe for our community. And yet, we have before us today, in the middle of a pandemic, requests to operate a pool with staffing costs over $1 million and operation costs close to $600,000. I cannot support this. We are not in a position to support this. I would rather sit on a pool and pay for the maintenance while we figure this out versus taking on $1 million in new staffing costs and hoping for the best. We were elected not to hope for the best. We were elected and put in this position to make tough decisions, and some of those decisions are hard. When my kids want to eat candy instead of steak and potatoes, and they want to cry because I tell them no, I tell them no because it's what's best. And approving this is not what's best for our city, and so I will not be supporting it. I really think we need to look at options outside of the box to help offset these costs. If we could figure out a way to cover this maintenance and not have to pull half a million dollars this year from our general fund, you know, subcontracting, limited services, there's other ways we can look at this, then I'm open to ear, I'm open all ears. I think we moved on this prematurely since 2019, and I feel that we're just moving into that. And, you know, Council Policy 600-05 says, a facility like this, we are supposed to, by our policies, under Parks and Rec, recoup 75% of our expenses in the Tier 1. And then Tier 2 and Tier 3, we're looking at needing to recoup 100%. So we're just not there on any of our pools, nor will we be there here. And I think that staff did a great job of putting an accurate estimate together, but I still think it's short. I really think that this facility's operational costs and staffing is going to exceed $2 million, because that's what they're spending. They're spending close to $2.5 million in Carlsbad on their facility. So I think the more we dig into this, it's kind of like we're exhausting resources, but we've come this far, we've come this far, and we're just going to keep taking and taking, and the taxpayers of Oceanside are going to suffer because we have roads that need repaired, we have potholes that need to be filled, we have, we're two fire stations short, our call times are almost 10 minutes. We have more important budgetary items that we should be spending these funds on than a pool. And that's why I will not be supporting this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson, have you programmed the funds required to operate this, operate the Aquatic Center?
Mayor, Mayor and Council Members, Deanna Larson, City Manager. So staff has included $800,000 into our financial forecast that the Finance Director will be presenting later this evening.
Yes.
And I would also note that we had approximately $2.2 million in annual debt service on the Civic Center complex. That was paid off in 2019. The debt service on the new pool is just under $1 million. And when you add in this delta of the operating costs, we're still less than we were spending two years ago on this building. And that was the financial plan that had been presented to the City Council, was to take the savings from paying off that bond issuance to help fund construction of the aquatic center. And so there is a delta there that became available and presumably, you know, it all goes into one fund, but helps cover the costs for the pool. And then, as Megan pointed out, we did not program any event revenue. The event facility is pretty nice, and I suspect it's going to be a popular site, and so we should even have more revenue coming in than what has been programmed in our budget.
Thank you. And the construction costs, that was through the bonding, that was something that was discussed for over some time, is that correct?
Correct. My understanding is planning for the pool, the Aquatic Center began in around 2015, and then, that was before I was with the city. Then we approved the construction contract in October of 2019. That's when the bonds were issued to fund the construction costs.
Thank you. Councilmember Weiss?
Was there a second to the mayor's motion?
Not yet.
So in October of 2017, the estimated operating costs were about $1.3 million, and they're up to about $1.7 now. It's interesting, we received an email with a link, because the documents were so large, to a whole series of documents that went back at least 10, if not longer, years in regards to all of the different actions on the pool. So if there's not a second to the mayor's motion, I would like to do a motion. My issue is not too dissimilar from Councilmember Rodriguez's, is, you know, the Brook Street operating costs are about $700,000 a year, and I think there's about $4 to $6 million in between deferred maintenance, needed upgrades, and replacement costs over the next few years for that pool. So I'm going to move approval of staff's recommendation with the direction to allocate the Brook Street funding to El Corazon to close that gap. And the balance of the Brook Street funding, because there will be a little extra, to go to the reserve fund to be used for potential employee compensation adjustments.
I would second that.
So let me just understand that. Councilmember Weiss, you are basically proposing to close the Brook Street Pool?
Yes.
Councilmember Keim?
I have the same concerns about operating costs and our bond payments. When we approved this in 2019, it's something, obviously, as a lifelong swimmer and water pole player, I think our city and our kids and residents deserve it, but it's expensive. And I brought this exact issue up then. When this gets built and we're working on staffing, we're going to have those upgrades to Brooks and Marshall Street, and we're going to be put in this exact position we're in today, where we have a murky economic future. We have extensive operating costs. I'm not ready to propose closing Brook Street at this point, but I think I'd like to figure out exactly how we can, how much that'll save us. I know it's not going to be exactly just minus that. I want to see what, what that would do and look at it, and then figure out a way if we can make sure that we get the kids from Crown Heights and the East Side access to El Corazon. I think that's important, whether it's, you're working with a nonprofit Boys and Girls Club, something to get them transportation. But it's, I think it's definitely something, when the time for those improvements come, we're not going to have the ability to do both. I mean, we're going to have, coming up, it's, you know, it's tough to fill police officers right now. It's going to be hard for me to say, you know, as the pay gets more lopsided with other cities, to, you know, keep increasing operating costs for a pool, and we can't offer our employees that, those same raises.
Thank you. I just want to make sure I understood the motion, because we're not agendized to discuss the closure of the pool, but what I understood from your motion is that you want staff to come back with a plan to close it and then allocate the savings to this project. Is that fair?
That's correct.
Mr. Rodriguez, you seconded the motion. Is that your understanding as well?
That was...
We're just taking the, we're, we're doing a budget decision today, because we're talking about pools. We're talking about Parks and Rec, which is an agendized item. So we're taking money from Brook, and if there's no money, it can't operate, it can't function, correct?
I understand, but I think we'd have to come back to formalize that budget change. I, I think you can give us that direction to do that. I don't have any issues with that, but I think we'd have to come back with a budget item to formalize that decision.
So you would not be moving forward on this, on the Aquatic Center tonight?
Correct. You could. I mean, you could give us direction to approve the, the resolution, which has all the fees associated with it and the budgetary items, but contingent upon staff coming back with a budget item along the lines of that you discussed.
Yeah, I just, I will not support it, the plan as is, with the budget as, without taking from something else. So if that's, if that's the motion, then I, I will yield to that.
I'm going to ask that this be bifurcated so that we can, because I support the Aquatic Center, of course. We've been on this for many years, and the community is 1,000% behind the Aquatic Center. And I don't know about the bleakness of our future, but we're going to be hearing about our five-year forecast, and it actually goes up, the revenues go up and not down. So I, I don't actually understand the thinking here on the dais. It sounds like, because it, everything is programmed in with respect to the five-year forecast, including the two community swimming pools, and it does not seem to me that we're, we're actually in the hole at all in terms of those, those three structures. So Deputy Mayor Keim?
So tonight, if this is going to, if we're going to approve the operating costs tonight, I'll defer to Councilmember Weiss, but I would like a follow-up. I think that's what a plan would look like to close Brook Street and what that could do to operating costs yearly. Is that...
Yeah, I mean, I think you can give direction to staff to come back.
We could do the bifurcation then. Vote on this and then direct staff to come back with a close, a plan to close Brook Street Pool. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the current motion ties the two together. And so you could bifurcate it if you'd like, but ultimately, we can't approve the budget change to the Brook's Pool tonight, because that's not before you. You could give us direction to bring that back even at your next meeting. Does that make sense?
Right. So I, I would like to bifurcate. Councilmember Rodriguez?
We're about to talk about budgets in the next item. We can't make adjustments and vote on a change tonight?
I think you can give us direction to bring back a budgetary change to implement your direction.
It was not noticed.
Got it.
Yeah.
So I'm not interested in bifurcating anything. These go hand in hand. So I think the modified motion, from what I understand, is we're not voting on anything tonight other than a fee schedule? Oh, sorry.
So are we, what exactly are we voting on tonight?
There is a motion. There is a motion on the floor at this time, which includes both. And so at this time, what I'd like to do is divide it, because it's still going to do the same thing. There's still going to be a motion, there's still going to be approval. What is before us is approval of the operation plan, adoption of the resolution, which is on the operation plan, and approve the appropriation. The appropriation would then be modified, could be modified once this comes back, and there is another item that'll be coming back as directed by this council to, to staff that will discuss the closer, the closing of Brook Street Pool and the moving of those funds to this.
Yeah, so what I would like to see is this put on hold, pushed pause, and it to come back with incorporating the offsetting costs of no longer operating Brook Street Pool.
So that, that could be a motion, a substitute motion, if you want to make that.
So I, I will withdraw my first motion, and I'm going to move that we continue this until the next council meeting and come back with the proposal as is and include the option of closing Brook Street and transferring the monies to both the El Corazon Pool and any balance of those funds to potential employee compensation adjustments.
There's a motion to continue. Is there a second?
I would just want to, I second that, but what I want to also know at that meeting from staff...
Hold on, hold on. Did you want to speak? Are you requesting to speak?
Yes, please, sorry.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
There's renovation costs that Brook Street will require in the future, if that can be also presented, because there's some savings we're going to take on there, because that, that's a ticking time bomb, and I would just like to have that presented as a part of it as well.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Keim?
I'm expecting just a comprehensive look at the future, I don't know if it's five or 10 years of our, all of our pools, what we could do. I mean, it's like go to Marshall Street and minimal cost, 47,000 a year, I think, something like that. I just want to see what, what our options look like, but a comprehensive look at that with upgrades and everything that's expected in the next 10 years. But I don't want to put the plan on hold, so I'm not going to support that.
Ms. Larson?
Mayor and Councilmembers, we will need to look at this comprehensively, because some of what staff anticipated was if all three pools were open, then that impacts scheduling availability, as well as, you know, number of positions and so forth could change. And so I think we are going to have to look at it all comprehensively, and it can't really be piecemealed.
So are you going to need more time than, well, the second meeting is February, it's three weeks from now, right? Let's see.
So I'm looking at staff.
It's 24th.
Is three weeks enough time? And the issue is, you know, the, the pool is, construction is wrapping up, and it's going to be turned over to us, so we've got to be prepared to take over that maintenance responsibility and, and prepare to start operating it. So yes, we will put everything together as rapidly as we can, so we can provide a report on the 20, at our next meeting on the 24th.
Deputy Mayor Keim?
That was my prior request.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez, how much time does he have?
So we have a motion in a second?
Hold on.
Hold on.
Councilmember Rodriguez has about four minutes left.
Okay. Go ahead.
So we have a motion in a second. I just want to clarify the, the motion. What do you have?
The motion is to continue this.
Continue this?
The motion was to continue this item to the next council meeting, which will include the transfer of the funds from Brook Street to El Corazon with the balance used for potential employee compensation. If that is correct. Yes, it is.
That would be to talk to a date certain of the 24th. There was never an intent to deprive the communities on the coast, especially Latino neighborhoods, of the Brook Street Pool. Brook Street Pool has continued to serve the community fully. It is a highly used, it's a highly used source, resource, and I am really surprised that this would come up and that we would be taking from the poor to give to the rich. That's what it looks like. We have been talking about financing for over 10 years now about this. We have, we do have a different, some different people on the council now, but I, hopefully, that the conversation has continued from the community and from the public in support of this, in support of the funding, which was through bonding, in support of making sure that we, that this is accessible to all people, all community members here in Oceanside. I am really disappointed in the motion. I'm really disappointed in the action that, that is being contemplated tonight. I am going to be moving, I am going to be voting against this motion, because it should not be continued. We should be going forward. We have promised the community August 21st, this is probably going to delay the project, and on top of that, we are going to completely deny a huge resource to kids that cannot even, you know, get to the beach. And here we are saying, no, we're not going to, we're not going to give, we're going to take this away from you. Deputy Mayor Keim, did you want to say something?
Yes, please. I have used these pools probably more than anyone on the dais. I learned how to swim at Marshall Street and worked at Brooks and Marshall Street. There's nobody that wants them all three open more than I. I was also a police officer. Would love to give our cops a reasonable raise right now with the year that they've had and a tremendous job they do. We don't have the money to do everything we want, and that was very apparent when we built this pool. I would love to have built, paid for the pool cash, like Carlsbad did. There's a lot of things I would love to have done. We only have so many resources. I don't want to delay the operational plan. I want to make sure that goes forward, but I, I do want to look at what we're going to have to do if we make these choices. We have a million-dollar surplus, and we could be going into a tough fall. We just don't know what economic future looks like. So again, I'm not going to support postponing the plan, but I want to see what a comprehensive analysis of the pools looks like, so we can, when we may have to make hard decisions, we're prepared to do it.
Okay, we're going to vote now. What I just want to say is that the comments about not being able to afford this at this time is absolutely not true. This has been planned for some time. It's been programmed, not for, within the five-year forecast, it has been included. Staff has been talking about getting, doing programming so that eventually it will pay more and more for itself. This is something that the community has been in, coming together, saying, yes, we want this. So let's vote.
I have my button pressed.
Councilmember Rodriguez, how, how much time does he have?
Three minutes left.
Okay.
I'm going to use all of them. So just to respond to Mayor Sanchez's comments about us having the money, that is, that is totally inaccurate. The planning over the last, gosh, five to seven years on this has been politically motivated, has been poor. The, the financials just don't pencil out, and that's what this is about. This isn't about wanting to close Brook Street. This is about not moving forward on funds that we don't have. It's the, it's the responsible thing to do, it's the wise thing to do, and we're just asking for staff to bring back an analysis, and, and we can make a decision on it, and that's what this is about. So if you have other ideas on how to fund this, instead of coming from our general fund and taking from our infrastructure fund, then I don't know why they haven't been brought up to this point, but bring them up between now and then, and, and we can look at different ideas. An idea that's been brought on the table, that's what we're going to consider. If there's other ideas, we'll consider them. Thank you.
Thank you. And what I'd like to say to that is all our parks are paid for by and covered by our general fund, all our parks. All of our recreational facilities are covered by these funds. This is why we, these are public and not private facilities. So yes, we have always said we knew how we were going to do this. This was not politically motivated, because we actually have had a 5-0 vote, and if I can say, I was usually on the, on a four to one. So we're talking about a majority of this council, who have been very fiscally conservative, including me, have always been supportive of this project, and this is a project that we should be proud of. I had a conversation with Mayor Matt Hall recently, and he indicated to me that, you know, it's about time that Oceanside stepped up and had a pool, and that they are making actually money off their pool. So I think this is poor vision that is being presented here tonight. It is, you know, taking advantage of a COVID and, and, and basically saying, oh, we can't afford this anymore, is absolutely ludicrous. We are going to be hearing about the five-year forecast, and, and I appreciate that staff has been working so hard to figure out how to make this dream come true. So I am really disappointed that we would be changing direction right before opening this phenomenal resource, but at the same time, we're going to say, okay, but you poor folks over here, because, you know, which is what the public is going to think, is it because it's based on color? And I am so outraged that we would actually even consider doing this tonight and talking about this. So I actually have 50 seconds left. Councilmember Weiss?
If you don't want to take it from Brook Street, come up with an alternate way of coming up with the shortfall.
You know, what I'm saying here is we don't have to do that. We don't have to do that. Let's vote.
3-2. Sanchez, Keim, no.
We're going to go back to the proclamations and presentations. We are talking still about the swearing-in of newly-appointed Councilmember Cory Jensen. We were in the middle of the public comment period, I believe. We were on, actually, you did not state the last person who was...
We do have Ken McCallach in the room. I believe he has his hand raised. Mr. McCallach, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
We'll move on to our next speaker. Oh, Mr. McCallach.
I'm here.
There you are, whenever you're ready, sir.
Yes, I'm Ken McCallach. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I reside at 3425 Spindrift Court in Oceanside. I've been here about 17 years. I have nothing personal against Cory Jensen, and I want to state that upfront. I don't even know who she is, but I believe that she does not belong in office, because we have, she hasn't proven her residence, and she was deceptive about where she lives, and I just think that that's a wrong way to start. So I don't think she should be in office, and I request that she resign. I request that an election be done, because I think a disservice has been done to the, I'm not into one, but I believe that the disservice has been done to the residents there and to everyone in Oceanside. There's, I believe, many better qualified candidates. I read about some of them, they seem much better qualified, and I don't think they were vetted well enough and that there was a good choice made, and I think that the residents there deserve the best qualified person. I think at this point, you need an election, and this is an important position where thousands of people are... And this is an important position where thousands of people are affected, and the people of that district deserve to have a selection in that. I think a disservice has been done to them, and an insult, really, by not allowing them, by this decision being made in a back room by a few people. It's supposed to be for the people, by the people, and of the people, and this does not represent that at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCallach.
Our next public comment is from Joan Bachmann, to be followed by Noel Breen, to be followed by Lisa Hamilton. And Ms. Bachmann, whenever you're ready.
Okay. I do not know Ms. Jensen, but I have grave concerns about her lack of involvement in our city and her ability to represent me. I have sent emails to the council about this. I ask her to stop right now and refuse to take the oath. She needs to back away from this process. There are too many unanswered questions. I know many people all over town. I've raised three kids here. You meet a lot of people that way. My son's teacher has already spoken tonight and asked for Ms. Jensen's resignation. The people I know in this meeting, I met by volunteering for many things throughout the city. I did my part to find out as much as I could about the appointee. My husband contacted our local historian, who knows everyone, and he didn't know her. No one knew anything about her. And the friends that spoke tonight never said they knew where she lived. They were surprised that she would even apply for this. So if this is the very first time this person is volunteering for our city, this is not the place to start. I welcome her to join any of the organizations I'm involved with. I'll even sit down with her and offer to describe the various committees she could apply for. There are many. Perhaps start with the library or the art museum or something. But this is not some little committee. You just heard decisions here tonight, again, that impact people greatly. So not knowing that closing Brook Street Pool destroys all the chances for grants to get money flowing into the city. It's between two barrios. I mean, something like that, you need to know these things. You need to be on top of this. Not being able to make decisions on financial things is a huge issue. We know nothing about you, and we've already been burned by this. I will be amazed if I hear the same level of concern when the city tries to give away our land on Oak Corazon. We have asked for them to know this stuff already.
Thank you, Ms. Bachmann.
So this is not where she should start, and she needs to resign. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Noel Breen, to be followed by Lisa Hamilton, to be followed by Joe Hill. Mr. Breen, whenever you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay, hi. I don't want to delve into all the personal issues and concerns voiced about Ms. Jensen this evening. But I can say, from somebody who's a pretty keen observer of local politics and who admin several platforms in the area that deal exclusively with local politics, the optics of this matter are really, really, really bad. President Obama often said that, and others, that when we see an attack on the rights of one group of people or even an individual, we see the attack on the rights of everyone. The process that this thing was done by was flawed. The appointee is obviously flawed. The two most respected news sources in the area have both come out with stories showing, unfortunately, very real cause to wonder if this person really lives where she says so. And as we all know, this isn't the first time that Oceanside has had some residency issues coming up as far as its public officials. The process was not transparent. Everybody knows that. I mean, this is not something that any unbiased person can look at and say, there was something rotten in Denmark with this entire thing. I would urge in this instance, and I'm sure transparency, you'll be forced one way or the other by some of the people we saw tonight. But I think that, you know, just for the image of politics in our area, this dirty thing needs to have the plug pulled on it, and this person shouldn't be holding office until she can go and establish with somebody where she really lives. I don't think that's too much test for the people of Oceanside, not one bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Breen.
Our next public comment is from Lisa Hamilton, to be followed by Joe Hill, to be followed by Andre Blaine. Ms. Hamilton, are you there? Please unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. I am Lisa Hamilton. I live at 323 South Dittmar in District 1. Honorable mayor, council members, I want to speak out strongly against the appointment of Cory Jensen to the District 1 council seat. I feel this is a corrupt appointment by three members of the council. Our system of government is based on fair dealing, which leads to trust in decisions. People have died to defend this system. You had a wide shortage of applicants who are qualified to fill the position, but instead, you chose an unknown who has participated in no way in Oceanside civic life and who has apparently lied about her residence on her application. This speaks of political corruption of the most blatant kind. Councilmember Rodriguez, you were in the Marine Corps to defend the American way of life. Is this it? Councilmember Khan, you swore in law enforcement to protect and serve. Is this doing that? Councilmember Weiss, you are a youth sports coach. Is corrupt dealing the example you want your young athletes to see and copy? The three of you are responsible for a council decision that once again flies in the face of public will and participation. It creates the feeling that voting doesn't matter. Public interest and participation don't matter. Only who knows who, and perhaps who gets paid off. You have betrayed the trust of the people of Oceanside. You should be ashamed. No one will see future decisions you make as anything but self-dealing. So avoid this. Do the right thing. Withdraw this appointment. Ms. Jensen, resign from the council. Stop this sham of democratic participation in city government. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hamilton.
Our next public comment is from Joe Hill, to be followed by Andre Blaine, to be followed by Jacob Peake. Mr. Hill, whenever you're ready.
Honorable mayor, city council members, my name is Joe Hill, 20-year resident of Oceanside. I'm speaking tonight on the District 1 appointment. Cory Jensen needs to resign from the council immediately. She cannot be an Oceanside council member because records show her principal residence is not in the city of Oceanside. It's a very simple matter. Records show Cory Jensen's current resident address is in the Carlsbad 92009. She has lived there about 13 years since November of 2007. She is actually current on paying her property tax on this residence and is claiming, as you have heard already, the homeowner's exemption on this property. Let's quote the tax code. "A homeowner exemption provides property tax savings by reducing the equalized assessed value of an eligible property. Most homeowners are eligible for this exemption if they own and occupy their property as their principal place of residence." As stated earlier, she is claiming the homeowner exemption on this Carlsbad residence. Fortunately, the records show she does not claim a homeowner's exemption on the Beachside Realty Airbnb VRBO rental property that she owns in Oceanside at 815 North Pacific. Records also show that she owes $49,079.02 in unpaid property taxes. Of course, Oceanside's not getting their portion either because we do collect property taxes on our homes in Oceanside. So they're not getting that money. It appears to this Oceanside resident that the only ethical and legal solution to solve this problem is resignation by Cory Jensen from the city council. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Andre Blaine, to be followed by Jacob Peake, to be followed by Allison Brown. Mr. Blaine, are you there? Please unmute your phone.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. The mayor and council persons, I would like to commend you, one for pickin' Cory for that council position. As people have noted earlier, that she has no qualification. But the Mr. Brooks that was actually on there earlier that was talking about the homeless, Cory has a KDAC 2 certification, which has over 6,000 clinical hours in order to achieve that certification in drug and alcohol counseling, which makes her the most qualified of all the 36 applicants that actually applied and also of any of the council members or the mayor to be able to deal with the mental issue and the homeless problems there. I mean, I'm surprised that these women that are attacking her, and that is one of their biggest agenda items, that instead of doing that, they might want to just get to know her a little bit, and they'd probably be surprised that they actually would like her and find many common areas that she could work with her. As far as the residence issue, it is a complete lie from two publications, I believe the two newspaper articles that were going... Everybody is quoting from these articles that Cory is not a District 1 resident. That's absolute 100% lie. She has been a District 1 resident and is a District 1 resident and lives here in District 1 and has for many, many, many years. And that's 100% factual and provable. So I don't know why these people, they're all quoting it's the same resources of where they're getting, but not one of them is actually factual. And it's really sad to see that somebody that wants to get on the council and try and do some really good things for Oceanside and she's exceptionally qualified to do those
Thank you, Mr. Blaine.
is being attacked like that.
Thank you, Mr. Blaine.
Our next public comment is from Jacob Peake, but we are unable to find Mr. Peake in the room. So we'll move on to our next public comment from Allison Brown. Mrs. Brown, whenever you're ready. Oh, please unmute yourself.
There we go. Okay, thanks. I can't tell you how excited I was for District 1 when I looked over the community members who stepped up to fill that council member vacancy. So many, so many qualified applicants. The majority faction of council, however, has pulled a pig in a poke, once again showing their disregard for the city, for Oceanside residents. The District 1 council-chosen applicant Cory Jensen clearly is not the most qualified person to represent citizens of District 1 and the city of Oceanside based on newspaper articles, based on recent revelations regarding Jensen's property taxes and regarding her residency in question. She's certainly not the best candidate. And based on my research, she never made even my long list of applicants. My goodness. I didn't think that the majority members of council could outdo their 2020 performances, but oh, have you proven me wrong. You found yet another bird of a feather, a person of possibly shady character who can't be forthcoming or won't be forthcoming with her candidacy filings and failure to keep her obligations to her community. What else will we find in time to come when there are important decisions to be made and greater scrutiny is applied? How are we to trust either you or your pick, Cory Jensen? It's nice to hear she's a nice person, but I don't necessarily want a nice person on council if they cannot be straight with the citizens of Oceanside. I want an honest person who will not lie...
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Doreen Statlander, to be followed by Kyle Crahill-Frolander, to be followed by Teresa Masters. Doreen, whenever you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good evening. I'm here tonight to call on the council not to proceed with the swearing-in of Cory Jensen and that Cory Jensen resign her appointment for the benefit of Oceanside. I myself was in public service for 30 years. Paramount, paramount to the public trust is honesty and transparency. This has not occurred with the appointment of Ms. Jensen to the council. Ms. Jensen's residency is questionable in what appears to be a shell game of rental properties and residency, and it's my understanding that this matter has now been referred to the district attorney for investigation. We are in a time of crisis and cannot afford the public's distrust of an appointed official who has not been transparent on a basic qualification to sit on the council or who is now under investigation. Think about it. More than ever, we need people to trust our leadership. The whole chaos and confusion about whether she is, it has clouded it and has caused distrust. So I implore Ms. Jensen to do the right thing and resign. And I call upon the council to move forward with a special election so candidates are properly vetted and are duly elected by the people. And at that time, if Ms. Jensen feels she can clarify all of this residency, then she can run and be duly elected. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Kyle Crahill-Frolander, to be followed by Teresa Masters, to be followed by Jose Tony Martinez. And Mr. Crahill, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, city clerk. Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members. My name is Kyle Crahill-Frolander, and I live in District 1. I live in my house in District 1. I don't move back and forth to my other house because I don't own more than one house. Our district needs a council member who represents us. We need a council member who our community knows. We need someone who has the experience to get the job done and who will fight for our neighborhoods, not for special interests. I was born and raised in Oceanside. I now serve on the Planning Commission, where I have helped protect our community while addressing the crises we face. I help strengthen our climate action plan so we can take action on the climate crisis. I voted for hundreds of new housing units to address our housing crisis while still protecting our neighborhoods and rejecting unsustainable sprawl. I served on the Brother Beto Standing Committee, where I stood up for unhoused neighbors. I supported a regulated market for cannabis in our city, both to protect our children and increase economic activity. I fought to protect mobile home rent control for our seniors and veterans on fixed incomes, and I've been part of the effort to grow our city's Oak Corazon Park, including the aquatic center. District 1 deserves a council member with integrity. I hope we can move on from this disgraceful situation and elect a council member who actually represents the community of District 1. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Teresa Masters, to be followed by Jose Tony Martinez, to be followed by Christine Smetely. And Ms. Masters, whenever you're ready.
Hello, everybody. I don't hear myself. Are you hearing me?
Yes.
We are.
Okay, thank you. I am against the shoo-in of Ms. Jensen without any prior opportunity for District 1 residents to voice their own opinion. Why are we entrusting a city council that is already self-serving, has two sides to their face, and have hidden agendas which come out when they don't expect it to be out? So why don't we have a citizens committee to vet when you are appointing an individual rather than paying for the election? What's wrong with having a group of citizens in on these vetting sessions? You're representing us. Let us represent ourselves. Let's stop hidden agendas. Let's stop political divisions. Let's stop personal religious feelings. And let's be honest, we do not have a person on the city council now with integrity that you can believe what they're saying. I'm sorry, agendas do not make it for me. Nice persons? I try to be a nice person myself. It was only when the state said a homeowners association cannot limit family unit only that I was able to find a way to live in my house beyond the earning ability to support it. Thanks to the state for doing that. Thanks to the state for doing that. No thanks to Oceanside, and no thanks to the homeowners association.
Thank you so much, Terri.
Thank you.
Our next public comments from Jose Tony Martinez, to be followed by Christine Smedley, to be followed by Dr. Cadre Webb. Mr. Martinez, whenever you're ready.
Honorable Madam Mayor Sanchez and city council members, Mr. Kaim Rodriguez and Weiss, my name is Tony Martinez. I am a longtime resident of Oceanside. I'd like to speak to the recent appointment of Ms. Cory Jensen to represent District One at the Oceanside City Council. Ms. Jensen seems to have misrepresented her fitness via rifle city council member to represent District One. We need to correct this flawed decision by pursuing a special election and have our neighbors of District One choose their own representative. First, two recent news media articles by the San Diego Union Tribune and San Diego Reader raise the question of whether Ms. Jensen has acted unethical in claiming to be a true and faithful resident of District One in the city of Oceanside. The San Diego Union Tribune article states that the house at the address Ms. Jensen provided in her application is advertised as a vacation rental on the "for rent by owner" site Airbnb. Ms. Jensen's renting her home during the year, thus meaning that this address is not owner-occupied. This qualifies her to represent District One. This is very clear. Living in District One for a portion of the year, be that for only a few days or weeks, is openly at odds with the residency requirement enforced to represent a district at the Oceanside City Council. From an ethical standpoint, we need a representative for District One who lives in District One. This is so because we need a representative who has participated and who will continue to participate in today's encounters among our neighbors in District One. Moreover, we need a representative who is aware of the needs and concerns of District One's residents. Ms. Jensen does not seem to meet this criteria. Second, tonight's callers have pointed to Ms. Jensen's roots in Oceanside and her application information at face value as sufficient proof allowing her to represent District One. This is a flawed and insufficient argument qualifying her to represent District One. Let me be clear, calling for the resignation of Ms. Jensen from the city council is not a judgment on her character or her passion for Oceanside.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Martinez.
Our next public comment is from Christine Smedley, to be followed by Dr. Cadre Webb, to be followed by Vanessa. And Dr. Smedley, are you there?
Yes, yes, I am.
Whenever you're ready.
Okay, my name is Christine Smedley. I've lived in Seaside, which is in District One, for 24 years. I'm calling for the resignation of Cory Jensen. She does not live in my district, and she should not be representing me or my neighbors. I agree with Reverend Coker, who began this meeting by saying that we feel disenfranchised. I didn't vote for her. I don't know her, and apparently she lied about her residency. Finally, please don't characterize some of this feedback as nasty and vile. It is not negative to insist on honesty and accountability. That's it.
Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Dr. Cadre Webb, and I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your first name, to be followed by Vanessa, to be followed by Maggie Matthews. Dr. Webb, whenever you're ready.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council. The process whereby government has been conducted in this city is egregious and dangerous at best. Civil servants take an oath and have an obligation to represent a constituency and to not dictate or serve their own self-interest. It is public service after all. Because of these unfortunate allegations and growing public ambiguity regarding new council member Jensen, it is the job and duty of this council to maintain public trust or to even recreate it because it is broken. It is their responsibility to therefore set aside ego and act responsibly. Tonight, I hold the three council members who voted for council member Jensen responsible for this, and this further substantiates my claim that the democratic process be given room. This council's attempts to smother it have only backfired in this case, and egg is on three of your four faces. Council members Kaim, Weiss, and Rodriguez are complicit in this. None of these three gentlemen live in District One but feel inclined to make a unilateral decision for District One. How democratic is that? Besides, it makes no logical sense. I have nothing personal against any of you. I do, however, take exception to this approach to governance. So council and citizens, this is why a special election is necessary. We never did trust the council to make this decision in the first place, and this has made it obvious that we should not. It is apparent that the council did not do its due diligence to vet these candidates. You don't have to knock on doors, Councilmember Weiss, as you retorted to the Tribune to properly vet a candidate. So that political pivot does no justice to this council choosing to meet with a few candidates within a few hours for such an important position in our government. This is not about cost, it's about integrity, fairness, and transparency, three standards that are seemingly eroding since three of our council members assumed office in recent years. Our public servants have turned a deaf ear to the voice of the people who make up this city, and while honest, and this is a scathing rebuke, I implore you to unclog those deaf ears. Here are the citizens of this city. You work for them. It's not the other way around. Even tonight with this challenge, which as constituents we have the right to offer you, we've committed to public service for us.
Thank you, Dr. Webb. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Vanessa. We hope we're unmuting the correct person. Vanessa, if this is you, whenever you're ready.
So I'm not sure if you can hear-
We could hear you. You could start whenever.
Okay, great. So my name is Vanessa. I'm a 23-year resident of the city of Oceanside. Honorable mayor and council, I'm calling to strongly urge you against appointing or swearing in Ms. Cory Jensen. I believe it's shame on you to Kaim Rodriguez and Weiss, because you did not follow city policy in interviewing and vetting all the candidates. And Rodriguez, you seemed so worried about city policy, that was not done. Shame on the three of you for rushing to appoint and vote in a three-to-one vote for Jensen. I take offense to Tommy's characterization earlier that we are the mob. We are concerned citizens. We do want truth and ethical behavior by all of our city officials. Many disturbing issues have become available regarding restrictive broker's license, which nobody's mentioned earlier. The California Real Estate License Board, in June of 2019, restricted Jensen's license because of mishandling of trust funds. Further, her residence is not at 815, as previously put on her application. It's clearly a rental property. She has an owner-occupied property in Carlsbad, and further, she owes back taxes and is not a fiscally responsible person. Even Jensen's friends say they're shocked and surprised that she's running for council. They want her to be forthcoming. Ms. Jensen, you have not been forthcoming. You'll need to resign immediately. And council members, Kaim, Rodriguez, and Weiss, if you do not allow her, or Jensen does not resign, you must not swear her in immediately. It is very much against the District One citizens. Rodriguez, you don't have to eat candy. All you have to do is make the decision not to swear in Jensen. You don't need to dig into other things. If you want to look at what is irregular and unethical, look at the behaviors-
Thank you, Ms. Vanessa. Thank you.
Our next public comment is from Maggie Matthews, but she's not in the room, so we'll move on to our final speaker, Ken Layton. Mr. Layton, you need to unmute yourself.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thank you. Ken Layton speaking for myself. Congratulations, Cory Jensen, you have successfully gamed the system. You got sworn in immediately after your appointment before all the information about your deceit could be told. Now we have the city of Oceanside asking the district attorney to look into criminal activity of its newest council person. The city's own database shows that 815 Pacific is a non-hosted timeshare, which means the owner does not live there. Cory, you yourself told the MLS website used by the real estate industry that your home in Carlsbad is owned, is owner-occupied, and 815 Pacific is not. Your next-door neighbor with a yellow truck and fellow neighbor, City Hall regular Pamela Myers, say that the whole neighborhood knows 815 Pacific is a short-term rental and that you don't live there. And we have the screenshot of the Airbnb ad which you just took down, presumably to destroy evidence. By the way, the reporters who broke the Cory Jensen news are neither Woodward or Bernstein. There's a big fat sign in the front yard of 815 Pacific that says the place is for rent and that anyone interested should call Cory Jensen on her cellphone. And now we hear that one or two of the councilmen who knew they made a huge mistake would like you to resign. Could it be you won't resign because you could use the resignation as leverage to bargain to reduce any forthcoming criminal charges? You want to drag us through a great big cesspool of bad publicity and civic embarrassment while the DA sorts out our bad laundry in public? We could have had an ex-mayor, a Harvard grad, a former federal official, a doctor, a planning commissioner, but no. Oceanside has to settle with someone who has proven she has all the wrong stuff right out of the gate. Thank you.
And that concludes the public comment.
Did you, did Jacob Peak, there was no more Jacob Peak or Maggie Matthews?
While the speakers were going through the, were speaking, we were going back to the list and see if there was anybody else was in there. None of these items, none of these individuals were in the room.
So this was calendared for swearing in for Cory Jensen. Actually, the actual swearing in occurred on last Thursday, is that correct?
That is correct. She was sworn in last Thursday. This is strictly a ceremonial swearing in.
It's ceremonial, which means it doesn't carry any weight with respect to any legal matters. So go ahead and go forward on that.
I have council member Jensen come to the center here, and we will swear you in.
Aye, state your name.
Aye. Aye, Cory Jensen.
Do solemnly swear-
Do solemnly swear-
That I will support and defend-
That I will support and defend-
The Constitution of the United States-
The Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
Against all enemies-
Against all enemies-
Foreign and domestic-
Foreign and domestic-
That I will bear true faith-
That I will bear true faith-
And allegiance-
And allegiance-
To the United, to the Constitution of the United States-
To the Constitution of the United States-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
And the Constitution of the State of California-
That I take this obligation freely-
That I take this obligation freely-
Without any mental reservation-
Without any mental reservation-
Or purpose of evasion-
Or purpose of evasion-
And that I will well-
And that I will well-
And faithfully-
And faithfully-
Discharge to duties-
Discharge to duties-
Of the office of member of the city council District One-
Of office of the member of the city council District One-
Of the city of Oceanside-
Of the city of Oceanside-
According to the best of my ability-
According to the best of my ability.
Ms. Jensen, would you like to make some comments?
I'm quite honored to join the city council, and I look forward to working with all of you-
Ms. Jensen, I'm just going to ask you just to move that microphone a little bit closer to you so we could hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I look forward to working with all of you to address the many challenges facing our city and to representing the wonderful people of Council District One. In thinking about the tasks ahead, it occurred to me that I embody the very diversity of Oceanside. My mother's family are immigrants from Mexico, the state of Sonora, to be exact. My father's family are originally immigrants from Denmark, moved here from Minnesota. That's the kind of mixed families you often find in Oceanside, and one that makes me very proud. I am proud of Oceanside and of Council District One. My parents met at Oceanside High. Their families lived in the neighborhoods in what is now District One. I'm proud to say that my father was a highly regarded player for the Pirates football team. I'm also proud to say that my mother was a cheerleader. It's quite cliche, but that's how they met. I say this not to be sentimental, rather to illustrate how important Oceanside is to me. In my life, I have moved to other cities and other states, but always, always holding Oceanside in my heart and knowing that I would return. Now let me address the issue of my residence. It's actually quite simple. I live on Pacific Street, a house that I have owned for 17 years, and like many in Oceanside, I have rented my home for short periods, but this remains my home. Now for the last year and a half, I have also been helping care for my daughter-in-law, who had very serious health challenges due to a pregnancy. She delivered the baby, my grandson, early in 2020. Following the birth, my daughter-in-law's condition worsened, ultimately resulting in heart surgery in the late spring. I say all of this to explain that I also spend many days and nights helping care for my daughter-in-law at their condo in Carlsbad that I also own. So yes, during parts of 2020, I was away from my home, but it remained my home and will always be my home. And it will remain my home as I represent Council District One. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any council members wish to speak? No? Okay, I would like to speak. I have listened and read all the comments. I didn't get home on the last Wednesday before I began getting text messages that Ms. Jensen did not even live at the address where she signed her name saying on her application that she lived. And it went from that to worse. I am an attorney, and with that eye, with those eyes, I looked at what Ms. Jensen has put forward to the public. I stated at the meeting last Wednesday that I did not know Ms. Jensen, that I've never heard of her, and while I acknowledge that there are over 27,000 people in District One and over 22,000 registered voters, that I possibly did not run into her because it is that large. But I do, I do stand for District One. It is the place that I have lived, that my parents have lived, and my dad actually ended up having to drop out of school because he had to, he had to help to raise the family with his, with his working in the fields. So I did not have my dad playing on football, nor my mom playing, being a cheerleader. But what I do have is a feeling for District One, a very strong, strong sense of caring and relationships and doing. Tonight, we actually had a District One item, and that was the Brook Street poll, and Ms. Jensen voted against the Brook Street poll, which just, just makes me realize she doesn't know District One. Because of the legal matters, I do agree that she should step down, that she should resign, and that we should have set this for election. That is what the voters of District One, the families of District One deserve. Thank you. Deputy Mayor Kaim.
I also want to address this. I became aware of this after the appointment. And like most of the applicants I interviewed, I tried to do as many in-person interviews as I could. I did not know Ms. Jensen prior to this, but she had a great interview. I was impressed with her long history in Oceanside as a nearly lifelong resident. That resonated with me. I think it's important. You know, however, I, honesty, integrity, and transparency and trust, and transparency and trust have been some of my guiding principles for my first two years, especially with the way, you know, the low levels of trust in government across the country. I think it's more important than ever that we set a good example in Oceanside. And, you know, one of those was with the appointment process, to try to make that more transparent. So no one could be more disappointed in this controversy than me. So again, I don't know the facts, though, and that's why I think it was appropriate. And I'm very glad that the district attorney is going to review it, and I'm looking forward to very expedient results to see exactly what happened. I'm going to withhold judgment until then, but again, I think it's important to be truthful and that we exactly, we understand exactly what happens. Again, I think we have- Again, I think we have, and that we're in the middle of COVID, we're trying to get our businesses through this, we're trying to restore trust with law enforcement across the country. We have a lot of real work to do, and I hope we get through this quickly and proceed. Thank you.
Thank you. We're, closed session report. Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss the following items. Item one was conference with labor negotiator involving the Oceanside Fire Association and the management employees of the city of Oceanside. I think I announced out before closed session OFMA as well, but that was not discussed. So with regard to OFA and MICO, there was no reportable action under the Brown Act. On item two, council met to discuss a significant exposure to litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. And that involved a governmental tort claim from Charles Ball, claim number 202000132. And the council voted unanimously to authorize a settlement in that sewage bill case for Finally, with respect to item 3A, conference with real estate negotiator. The property was Ruby's Oceanside Limited, the Ruby's Diner located at One Peer View Way. Negotiating parties, city of Oceanside and Chapter 7 trustee for Ruby's Oceanside Limited. Under negotiations are price and terms for the lease of the property. And I can report that the city council unanimously agreed to direct staff to abate the rent on that property for a period of three months. There was no dissent on that item. So that's the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Back to the consent calendar, an item was pulled. That was item number 13, which is acceptance of the city treasurer's recommendation for appointment to the Citizen Investment Oversight Committee. I'll take this over to our city treasurer, Victor Roy.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pulled it, and I just have one comment to make, and I'll move approval. We got the staff report, and Mr. Roy handed out Mr. Kagan's application materials just at the start of the meeting. My only concern was, he said there were three, in the staff report, it said there were three applications. And I looked online under the city clerk's office, and there were no other applications online or in the packet. I know we got Mr. Kagan's, and I would just like to make sure that in the future, that the applications that do come in, we at least have an opportunity, and the public has an opportunity to review them. And with that, I'll move approval of the recommendation.
I'll second that motion. Any other comments? Please vote. Thank you. We're now back on, to the agenda on general items. That is item number 14, submittal of the fiscal year 2021 to 2022 through fiscal year 2025 to 2026, general fund five-year financial forecast, which we've been hearing about all night long, for review and direction to staff to proceed with developing a fiscally sustainable budget strategy. Ms. McPherson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Jane McPherson, Financial Services Director, here tonight to present the five-year financial So the idea of the forecast is to identify financial trends, identify changes in expenditures, project the cost of maintaining current service levels, and recommending that the city council accept the fiscal year 2122 through fiscal year 202526 general fund financial forecast. The assumptions used include, it assumed, static conditions. We use the current fiscal year 2021 budget for the basis to start the expenditure numbers for fiscal year 2122. During the beginning of the COVID crisis, as we approached the budget for 2021 that we're currently in, there were reductions, including some for MNO, and that restores the 10%. So we put back in that 10%. However, it doesn't include a CPI increase, which we've included. So that's something, but we have included any known contract increases. So also, it includes all negotiated and known personnel costs, as well as placeholders for those years that have yet to be negotiated. It includes our required reserve, the 12% for healthy cities, including also whatever is restricted by the actuaries and by the rules that we abide by under GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, for workers' compensation and risk management. It also includes all CalPERS base, increases based on our most recent actual report dated July 2020. As you can see throughout the years, from 2021 through 2526, there's a $5 million increase. CalPERS continues to be one of our major expenditures. As a comparison, you can see the percent of compensation that we're charged by PERS. For the current year, it's 45.5% for safety. And then if you go five years out to 2526, it's going up to 49.8%. Miscellaneous, which is currently 34.1%, in five years, it'll be going to 36.2%. Here is the projected numbers for the forecast for 2122, which will become the basis for our, also for our budget that we'll be presenting in June. General fund revenues, we are projecting that they'll be at 170, 170 million, 7, 170,000. General fund expenditures, 169 million and 140,000, with a surplus of $1 million approximately. So what is the capacity? Everybody wants to know what else we can afford. The net surplus will allow for minor net new ongoing costs and availability for some one-time items. Continue, the city manager will continue to scrutinize all replacement hiring, which we've done for some time now. We're going to continue to decline additional new programs without a new revenue source to offset that expense. Consider investing additional funds in CalPERS trust account to generate greater investment earnings to fund pension costs. In addition, we'll continue to research efficiencies to reduce costs while ensuring that we're still effectively providing necessary services to our citizens. Staff recommends that the city council accept the fiscal year 202122 through fiscal year 2526 general fund five-year financial forecast. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. So no questions? Do we have any?
No public on this item.
Okay. Do we, so do we have any public comments on off-agenda items?
We have about six comments on off-agenda items.
Okay. Councilmember Weiss?
Just to clarify, so our sales tax, the general fund sales tax?
Yes.
Actually went down, but it shows an increase here because of the Measure X funds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And in the backup material, you have this little cartoon with the pension obligations rolling downhill onto, so even though we're setting money aside, it looks to me that our unfunded pension liability went from 220 million to over 240 million, so it went up by $20 million. We also received some information this last week that we're underfunding our street program to the tune of about $5 million a year. So if we try to pay off our unfunded pension liability, that's about $20 million a year, and add $5 million to that for street improvements, that's $25 million. And yet, we have a $170 million budget that has a, about a 1%, less than 1% surplus to it. So I think it's incumbent upon us, as we get ready to start our, the budget process, at least through staff, and then go to the budget workshops, that we put together some type of a plan to look at how we're going to make up some of these significant funding gaps, particularly with the pension liabilities. If they continue to keep rising, all we're doing is kicking the can down the road. At some point in time, we need to seriously address that. And I know we're putting some money aside, but clearly, if our liability is going up $20 million a year, but we only have $16 million set aside to help pay it, it's still a $4 million a year gap between just the increases. We're not, let alone paying off the principal balance. So with that, I'll move staff recommendation.
Thank you. It's motion, okay, I guess it's a motion to accept. So let's vote.
Thank you, Jane.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Okay. Public comments on off-agenda items? You said we have six?
Yes, we do. We have six speakers on off-agenda items. Our first speaker is Peggy Walker, to be followed by Morgan McCray, to be followed by Nadine Scott. So Ms. Walker, are you there? Can you unmute yourself? Ms. Walker? Ms. Walker, are you there? All right, we're going to move on to our next public comment.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, whenever you're ready.
Hello?
Yes, you can start.
Oops. I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You can start.
I'm sorry, I thought I was on the phone, but excuse me. Good evening, Mayor and Council, Peggy Walker here. I had wanted to welcome new council member Cory Jensen. I do not know her, but as a mother, grandmother, and public health advocate, I think it will be useful to have someone on the council with a background in addiction counseling. And that brings me to the real point of my talking points tonight. I find that the current climate of accelerating marijuana business expansion, which increases addiction, ER admissions, DUIs, and teen vaping, is very troublesome. Using the drug once a week for six months can knock two IQ points off the brains of kids. Oceanside has decided on marijuana tax rates, and like other cities, is considering expanding permitted businesses. Now, the county board of supervisors is also inviting unlimited marijuana businesses into unincorporated areas of the county. This makes me wonder, what's it going to be like with neighboring cities and now the county, all competing with each other for sales and marijuana tax dollars? Especially concerning are the unintended consequences of COVID shutdowns and increased marijuana and other drug use. Since the COVID pandemic, psychiatric emergency visits at Brady Children's Hospital, for one, have crept up, emphasizing the stress young people are under with COVID isolation. Conditions like this lead to anxiety and increased drug experimentation. The pot industry and policymakers want to tell us that legalization reduces youth use, but official databases differ. Colorado data shows youth pot use has increased 40% since legalization and not slowed down. In my work, I know that parents and families everywhere share concern that unchecked expansion and competition will kindle increased youth marijuana use, but we don't have the political clout to stop the decisions that promulgated here and throughout our county. So I would ask you, please, to consider carefully the harms, the competition, and the saturation related to marijuana commercialization regarding the future decisions that you make. Our youth are at stake. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next public comments from Morgan McCray, to be followed by Nadine Scott, to be followed by Ken Leighton. Mrs. McCray, whenever you're ready.
Hi, everyone. Hi, okay. So I, I'm going to be on a lighter note about a development project that I have in mind for Oceanside. I, I don't know, I sent an email to, to Mr. Navarro. Is it possible to share that video that I sent you over email?
I just got the email right before you, you started talking.
Yeah.
We are unable to share any video.
Okay, all right, no worries. Okay, so anyways, my, my idea is an international tennis center, and this would be something huge for Oceanside. It would be, it would put Oceanside on the map in so many different ways. One of them is that a tennis center, I'm a professional tennis player, so is my sister, and it creates a lot of opportunities for kids, for one, because there's college scholarship opportunities available for kids in the future. So that's a huge, a huge thing. A lot of scholarships are available for boys and girls as well. And yeah, I know this from experience because I've gotten plenty of scholarship offers, and so has my sister, to West Point and Apple. So it would create tons of opportunity for kids and tons of jobs. A tennis stadium can create jobs for coaches, trainers, of all sorts, basically. And yeah, and this is, yeah, coaches, trainers, as well as shop vendors, a clubhouse, cafes, restaurants, and just revenue, because with a big turn, with big tournaments that you can put on, professional tournaments, you can have people from all over come to watch, and you can have professional players, as well as sponsors come. And this is something that there isn't in North County. There is no professional tennis, anything, or professional arenas for this sort of thing in North County. And I think it would add a whole, whole, whole lot to Oceanside, and it would also just provide so many opportunities for kids and job opportunities that we just don't have. And this is just something I think, and yeah, something I think would be a huge plus to Oceanside. I think it would be great next to El Corazon because there's tons of space over there, and there's already a aquatic center. So this would, it could be like an athletic complex, basically. And I think it's something that we need because people from all around could come. You can have professional tournaments, it could be televised, you can have vendors, trainers, you know, coaches, all that, like trainers of all different types, sports doctors, waiters, waitresses, all that, maintenance, and even childcare, too. So it's a great place to even just, you know, drop off your kids, it'll be safe, and that would be, yeah, basically my proposition. I don't have, I don't know how much time I have, because I was trying to get it all in there, but.
Thank you very much, Ms. McCray.
Hope you get support.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nadine Scott, but she is currently not in the room. So we will move to our next public comment from Ken Leighton.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, whenever you're ready.
Okay, Ken Leighton Southos, speaking only for myself again. It's interesting that here we have again another lie. Just tonight, Ms. Jensen said that she had to spend time in Carlsbad to be with her daughter-in-law when she told Phil Deal of the Union Tribune, "Oh, I actually have a, a place, an apartment nearby in the district that I stay at," which is what her neighbors actually told me, too. So it's funny how she changes her story yet again. Anyway, Mayor Sanchez and councilman, I wanted to speak a little bit about sketchy ethics from the council itself that brought us to where we are today. It's about the big picture, but also including your recent appointment. You made it real clear last week that unlike Carlsbad, which has standards and ethics, and in fact holds special elections when needed to preserve its public trust. You said there was no way we could fund a special election from our $169 million annual budget. Once again, we are the podunk, backwater, bug tussle by the sea. But, but it was a swift way you zipped through the selection process with little discussion that made the bells go off. You didn't want to hear anything from over 20 of the applicants, and when you interviewed the top 11, one councilman couldn't even be bothered to ask any questions. I think the citizens, the voters, the homeowners of Oceanside, people who, unlike Cory Jensen, pay their property taxes, are getting fed up with their. are getting fed up with your insider corrupt boys' club. We expect this from Chris Rodriguez, who taps into his city election campaign cash for personal use, just like Duncan Hunter. But isn't it a coinkydink that both Rodriguez and Cory Jensen sell real estate? They both have issues with personal foreclosures and are up to their eyeballs in short-term rentals. But why would the other two immediately jump on board with Cory Jensen with little or no questions asked? This questionable appointment process, which smells like a prearranged done deal, is now pointing to the ethics of Mr. Keim and Mr. Weiss. We haven't really looked under the hood with these two gentlemen. Mr. Weiss, you never really explained why you supported North River Farms when the Planning Commission and the planning city staff said this is an urban disaster, urban blight disaster. The city voters rejected it by a vote of two to one. Does your unexplained love of NRF and your rush through the appointment of Cory Jensen with no vetting speak to some broader ethics questions? And Mr. Keim, does your embrace, without question, of Cory Jensen have anything to do with the fact that you collect disability from both the city and the county, but still tell people you surf all the time and you walked your entire district when you ran for election? Did a shifty ethics scale impact your rush through on Cory Jensen? What's the deal?
Thank you, Mr. Layton.
We have more questions that need to be answered.
Our next public comment is from Teresa Masters, to be followed by Terry Ann Skelly. And Ms. Masters, whenever you're ready.
Okay, I unmuted, so I have two issues. One is, I agree with everything questioning the integrity of the peoples. You have every right to get answers, as I do as well. Now, because I had a stroke, I walk my neighborhood. I cannot walk alone, so I have a willing walking partner, previously unknown to me, who also lives on Corte Verano, where I live. We walk Corte Verano, Avanida and Dante, Avanida Oceano, back up and coming down to Corte Verano. The street sidewalks and the pavement of the street. I had a fall, and I fell right on the downhill part of Corte Verano from Oceano. I called the city. I was, they called me back. I'm told to go out in the middle of the street and get the name on every manhole that's sinking below the surface, and then call that department and say, "Hey, your manhole is sinking." I've been told to call engineering because they're the only ones who can get the street repaved. I'm not asking you to repave it. I'm asking you to not ask me to go in the street, take pictures for you. You do have staff to do that, okay? So I'm also told that the sidewalks belong to the homeowners' association. And I said, "Okay, where can I bring that up with the homeowners?" Because I'm a regular attendee there, as well as the city council. And I was told that I have to find those by calling another city department. How much am I supposed to do as a citizen to get the streets taken care of without me carrying a camera and stopping to take addresses? There are street markings on a lot of the pushed-up sidewalks, but they've been there for a long time, and I don't know who put those markings in. So that's the number one. Number two is, every utility other than Oceanside Water offers senior rates or rates for people who qualify as unable to pay those rates. I've been asking the city of Oceanside for years, "Could you consider giving this consideration to people like myself who struggle to get past the, what I used to have?" I've had two cancers and a stroke. I don't have a CD or anything else. Thankfully, I can now have a tenant in the house.
Thank you, Ms. Masters. Thank you, McMasters. Thank you so much.
Our next speaker, Terry Ann Skelly, is not in the room. So that concludes items off of the agenda.
Okay, now we have general council member comments. Any comments? No?
I just have one quick comment.
Yes.
I was a little bit confused. On the Citizens Investment Oversight Committee, the city clerk does not handle those applications. That's handled with the city treasury. But we can work with the city treasury in making sure those are online.
Okay, great. All right, I'm gonna, we're gonna adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting. That is Wednesday, February 24th, 2020, at 3:30. Thank you.